Good evening. I would like to call tonight's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order, please, or the clerk, please, call the roll.
Mayor CRC?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Me voila.
Councilmember Dibala?
Present.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Ready to go.
Councilmember Gilbert? Councilmember Gilbert?
Here.
Councilmember Hansak?
Here.
Councilmember Wes?
Here.
Good evening, everyone. You may be wondering why we are all in costume this evening. It is in recognition of a resolution calling for a fund and save October 31st. And also, we have our Monster Bash winners and our literary award winner may also be joining us. And so, we want to make sure that we acknowledge them as well. In terms of the agenda this evening, we have two voting items this evening. The first is the resolution calling for a fund and save October 31st, 2025. The second is a first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code regarding the use of the city's seal or logo. The other items this evening, we have two work sessions. The first is a discussion of legislative priorities. And the second is the development and implementation of a community connectors model. In terms of upcoming meetings, the council will, just as a reminder, Friday, October 31st is Halloween. Please be safe when you're out and about. On Wednesday, November 5th, the council will meet its regular time of 7:30. We will begin with a proclamation recognizing November as Municipal Government Works Month. We will then have a presentation, quarterly financial report, first quarter. And then we will have a voting session, a second reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code regarding the use of the city's seal or logo. And we are tentatively slated for the resolution regarding the development and implementation of a community connectors model. We also have four work sessions that evening. The first is amending the Tacoma Park Code to expand the homeowner property tax credit program. The second is a contract for rent stabilization study. Third is immigrant support services. And fourth is the option to address the requirements of the noise ordinance. On Tuesday, November 11th, is Veterans Day. City offices and facilities are closed for the Veterans Day holiday. On Wednesday, November 12th, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We will begin with three presentations. So first is the FY25 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Audit. The second is the Police Employees Retirement Plan Actuary Valuation. Then we have the City Manager FY27 Budget Projections. We also have two voting, actually more than two voting items, three voting items that evening. A single reading ordinance awarding a contract for a rent stabilization study. The first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code to expand the homeowner property tax credit program. And the first reading ordinance approving use of unassigned reserves to fund immigrant support services. We then have two work sessions. The first is finalization of legislative priorities. And the second is the New Hampshire Ave Recreation Center. On Monday, November 17th, will be the Community Budget Forum. That will be available remotely as well as in person. On November 19th through the 22nd is the National Legal Cities City Summit in Salt Lake City. And a number of council members will be attending that event. And that is all I'm going to carry forward for right now. In terms of next items this evening, we're going to move to public comments on voting items. Again, the voting items this evening, the first is a resolution calling for a fund and save October 31st. And the second is the first reading ordinance amended the Tacoma Park Code regarding the use of city's seal or logo. Do we have any public comments on voting items this evening?
Do we have any virtual public comments on voting items?
Okay, great. We're going to move to general public comments. Do you have any general public comments this evening? Give me one second. Just want to let the tech team know, I don't have any controls. So I am not able to manage the mic. Okay, perfect, it's on.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good evening, I'm Trace Gibson, I live in Ward 3. I know that we're all delighted that MCPS Superintendent Taylor has proposed a new facility for Piney Branch Elementary School. With high need and scarce resources, Tacoma Park is blessed as a community to be on the list to receive a new school. I'm here tonight as the MCC PTA Blair Cluster Coordinator, representing the teachers of Piney Branch Elementary School. As you know, the parking lot at Piney Branch Elementary School is very limited. Excuse me, school staff can spend 20 to 30 minutes searching for a parking space on the street if the school lot is full when they arrive. I'm here to ask the city to designate MCPS staff's street parking spaces on Maple Avenue from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, in front of Piney Branch Elementary School and the Tacoma Park Community Center. On a preliminary basis, I've identified 25 street parking spaces that could be set aside for school staff. Teachers have communicated to me that they have urgent need for more parking. They would most definitely use the spaces and would be delighted to have their parking needs recognized and addressed by the city of Tacoma Park with designated street parking reserved during the week for MCPS staff use. The Piney Branch Swimming Pool currently in the proposed MCPS CIP budget will cost approximately $10 million. Constructing a high school-sized gym in the elementary school adds another $2 million to the cost of the new school. I don't know if this $12 million will remain in the final budget, but I do know that these amenities are reducing the number of school parking spaces available for school staff. It would be helpful to have street-designated parking for the school staff permanently available for them, even if the city constructs the Maple Avenue Connectivity Bike Lane. If the city agrees to support school staff by granting this request, it would be helpful to have this parking arrangement established as soon as possible. I look forward to hearing from council and the city manager regarding this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other general public comments?
So, hi, I'm Elizabeth, Ward 1, Elizabeth Wallace. Last week, we heard from the Election Committee and the Compensation Committee. So I'm here this week to follow up. You may not know, but in 2018, on Friday, before the election, I signed up to be a write-in candidate. Back then, you could. My name wasn't on the ballot. I had two days to hand out leaflets. Against a multi-term incumbent, I received 8% of the vote for mayor. Winning wasn't my goal. I believe if someone runs unopposed, it's not a fair election. People want a choice that makes them come out and vote. I believe you, out there in TV land, should run even if you don't think you will win. You can make your voice heard, ask different questions, point out different concerns, learn stuff. But it's expensive. And this is what I suggest. Ban wasteful yard signs. And Tacoma Park residents feel freedom to remove them, crush them, and put them in the public trash anyway. Instead, have the city post a large election notice on each bus stop, in each ward, with a QR code perhaps on them so people can find the candidates. Advertise the elections everywhere. Make it accessible. If you need a website, the city should offer a fee to help with each and every candidate to get a Wix-type account and a workshop to teach you how to do it. No more fundraising in private homes. Make it all public, where we have real conversations with any member of the city. Because even if you're running in one ward as a councilperson, you decide for all. Other people in the city deserve to know who you are. No more waiting until after the election for the candidates to get a lesson on how the city works or go on a police ride-along. Instead, have a course with a certificate and maybe even a quiz, if need be, on the city code that anyone can take. Make it a prerequisite for running. Go one step further, involve Montgomery College, make it a credit course. As mentioned last week, prepare council members with well-designed templates and training to lessen the tendency of residents just to crawl past or delete their newsletter without reading. Elders are at a time of life when it's time to give back, and they have an advantage for running. They might not need the compensation, so those candidates should have multi-generational advisors. If you are chosen by majority, remember the other candidates won many votes as well. Seek them out, work together with their respect. If you run, we'll tell you stories. Stories about insults that we get going door-to-door, pit bulls chasing you down the street, dangerous stair steps. You will want to quit, but do it anyway. And you will want to do when people entrust their life stories to you while standing on their cold doorstep. All of you out there who have ever crossed your mind, come here and tell the city council what you need to run. Make it fair, make it affordable, make it transparent. The city council should not hesitate to help you because city council members are here to serve the city, not their careers. So if you don't like what I said, don't find fault, fine tune.
Thank you very much. Do we have any virtual public comments? Paul, can you hear us? Oh, I'm so sorry. One second, Paul, I'm so sorry. Arthur? I didn't see you over there, no worries. Okay, thank you, Paul, I appreciate that.
Arthur David Olson, Ward 4, Herbie Hancock Avenue, and this is as close to a costume as I get. To its credit, last year, the city council did something new in its budget resolution, setting a property tax goal. Alas, the goal was an unchanged property tax rate. Given increases in property tax assessments, this meant that property tax bills increased at a higher rate than the rate of inflation. As I say, perhaps too often, people do not pay property tax rates, they pay property tax bills. The good news is that the council can do better this year. And it can do it with now, without having to wait to learn the constant yield tax rate. Last week, a 2026 federal social security cost-of-living adjustment, COLA, of 2.8% was announced. That COLA also applies to some federal retirees. That 2.8% COLA is our best measure of people's increased ability to pay taxes. For civil service retirees like me, it's an exact measure. Given Donald Trump's proposal to limit the federal employee COLA, current federal employee COLA to 1% and to freeze locality pay, current federal employees may see increases of less than 2.8% even with longevity increases. The ability of federal employees to pay may be further reduced if furloughed employees do not receive back pay. And it is significantly reduced for fired federal employees and contractors. Property tax revenue for the current budget year was budgeted at just about $17 million. By capping next year's revenue at 2.8% more than that, at about $17.476 million, the council can avoid having total property taxes grow faster than inflation. Now, the council may want to set a cap lower than that to make up for tax increases that were greater than inflation in eight of the last 10 years. But the medical dictum applies. First, do no harm. Now's the time for a council budget resolution calling for no more than $17.476 billion in property tax revenue in fiscal year 2027. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Paul, now's your turn.
Good evening, Paul Hubner, Ward 3. I always feel like I've learned something when I listen to Arthur. He has a great critical analysis and deals with objective facts, and I have great respect for that. So, but what I'm here to speak about tonight is, I listened to and read the council compensation report. And although they did not recommend any increase for mayor and council, I also delved deeper into the stats of the amount of hours that mayor and council work. And I've seen that both in practice and talking to the council members and by watching the many council meetings. And it just seems like there is an inordinate load held. And I respect you greatly, and I, in spite of sometimes not agreeing with you, I greatly respect your dedication to the residents. I would, however, wonder, as we can't give you many more hours, what would help the council members to do a better job? It certainly seems to me, with the expansion of staff across the board and the multiple increases, I mean, we added a new deputy this past year, a deputy city manager with about $250,000 a year. I can't see why the council doesn't have any staff to do their bidding, to do their work, to do all the footwork, all the research, all the deep dive that you need. But I, so I really have a question, and that is, what, I'd like to hear the council discuss, what it is that you need? Everyone else is always coming to you, asking for what we need. But I'm wondering, for a change, what it is you need, and I hope that someone will respond to that. And I thank you again for what you do.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hubner. Do we have any other general public comments virtually?
Mary Jane?
Okay. All right. Okay, we're going to move on with the agenda this evening to council comments. Do we have any council comments this evening? Councilmember Hansak?
Well, I guess I would first, I'll leave it to the mayor to give further comments, but I want to say, welcome to our youth who are in costume out there. It's fun to have you here, and you're making us smile up here on the dais. And I see one of you is holding the resolution for the evening, so I'm just going to explain to you how that should work, because even a lot of adults don't know. Which is, those are available online prior to our meetings. They get posted usually a couple days before. And then, if you have comments on them, you would step up when we're going to vote on that item. And you can also call in, but if you show up here, you don't have to call in advance. So you don't have to, you don't have to sign up in advance. So, and I just, it's really nice to see you. I hope that you'll come again with or without costumes. And we had a lot of fun at Monster Bash. A lot of us were out there in different costumes than you see here today. And on more substantive issues, last week, I attended Cafe Sito at Rolling Terrace. And I was really delighted, and I wanted to share this with staff and council, that it was really quite incredible to me to see that residents were showing up for these Cafe Sitos in spite of our current climate, which means they continue to be a safe space for residents. And I think, I have come to understand that they are being offered at just about every one of our local public schools in the daytime hours. So they're a great avenue to reach a lot of our immigrant community, a lot of parents who aren't able to make it to PTA meetings at night, and also they're given in Spanish and sometimes in other languages. And I want to say thank you to our city's gardening staff and all the volunteers who came out to help clean up and plant and weed in the peace garden. I heard it was a wonderful day. And they also remembered one of our residents, James Baird, who passed sadly this year. But our young preschoolers from Tacoma Park Cooperative Nursery School came out for the first time and helped with the gardening. So that was really, really lovely. I heard they had a really nice time. And hopefully, they will steward that garden for many years to come. And then finally, coming up this weekend, we have the Washington Adventist University Comedy Conference along with, I think, I don't have the date, but I'm sure our staff will share about our own city's comedy coming up. There's the Long Branch Haunted House on Friday night. And then, please consider coming out this Sunday for the Long Branch 5K Fun Run. It's a really good time, and it supports the Long Branch business community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. Councilmember Weslek?
Thank you. Good evening to everyone. Thank you to all that helped put on Monster Bash. My family and I had a really great time, even though my daughter did not win a prize for her amazing costume, but that's all right. And looking forward to this weekend. I know in Hillwood Manor, there's going to be a block closed off on Halloween that all are welcome to. And on Saturday, there's a Halloween block party in New Hampshire Gardens, so lots of fun activities. I just wanted to share one thing. Last week, I spoke at the Montgomery Council, at the Board of Education, the MCPS Board of Education advocating for support of the proposed changes that the superintendent put forward for Piney Branch, which I still fully support. I just want to add that I got some feedback from folks and realized that some of what I said came across a bit insensitive. So I wanted to point that out and share more publicly. That I, I'm very happy and hope that in the end, there will be holding schools down county. And I, like others, eagerly await to see what will happen for the community that's currently at Sligo Creek Elementary School as well as at Silver Spring International Middle School. So I look forward to hearing a full response and plan for those school communities because they might be displaced. So, that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Weslek. And I just, really quickly, I've learned that Mary Jane Machui has joined. Ms. Machui, can you hear us now?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Good, can you see me?
We can't see you, but we can hear you, so go right ahead.
I can hear you. I've always been able to hear you all.
Good, we can hear you too.
Okay, the hostess asked you to start your video. I pressed okay, but it's not doing anything. There it is.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm just calling to say I'm mad. You want, please, help people who are disabled and special needs, the low-income people. Lots of times, like my son, you just ignore him. He needs help. He needs help desperately. A story of parents is adults in 2005. And we just have a few people who join. It's very, very difficult. It's very depressing trying to help to get people from everybody else. Likes everybody. They like everybody in this whole world except for him. And he was born in Tacoma Park 40 years ago. And you should take that consideration. His father is from Kenya and was shot in the head years ago. And no one helped him. I'm his, helping his father and him at the same time. And it's depressing because I don't have too many people helping me. But the Village of Tacoma Park people have helped me, especially with the rides, and I appreciate that very much. Thank you, and happy Halloween.
Thank you, Ms. Machui. Okay, we're going to move on to council comments. I just want to make sure Ms. Machui's mic is off. Great. We're going to move on to Councilmember Dibala.
Thank you, Mary Jane, for coming out virtually and sharing your comments. I just have one thing, for people who are interested in Dorothy's Woods, the city is going to have a meeting, a community meeting, on Tuesday, November 4th, virtually at 6:30 to talk about. the work that's envisioned in the grant that the city got to do some of the improvements the residents have been talking about for a while. So you don't have to register ahead. You just need the Zoom, new Zoom login, which I can provide to people if you need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Councilmember Gilbert?
Thank you, Mayor. And I hope I'm not scaring too many people out there dressed as an old retired burglar and with failing eyesight. So I'm gonna lose the mask in a second so that I can see my notes. Really quickly first, there's gonna be a traffic control device going up at Jefferson and Lincoln. I know I sent out some notices to the community. Just a reminder, that should be up within the next week or so. And again, really thankful to City Manager DiSpirito and Director Braithwaite for putting boots on the ground and actually going out to that location and taking a look at it before making their final decision and seeing it from where the residents were seeing it and the issues that they were having with that intersection. So again, Jefferson and Lincoln stop signs should go up within a week or so. I too was at the Board of Education, speaking on behalf of the mayor and my colleagues, Mr. Porter of the Piney Branch Elementary School and CIP project. And I want to say thank you, first of all, to the mayor and those who weren't able to come speak for allowing me and Councilmember Weselik to speak on your behalf. It was an honor, and it was a really good experience. I'm sure I speak for Councilmember Weselik in that behalf, so thank you. And I sit here a little sad right now because of what I'm learning about the impacts that the cancellation of the SNAP program is and what that's gonna mean to our residents. I received some communication from a few residents and in support of those who may be experiencing some really adverse home conditions as a result. So I'll be looking to have some conversation with my colleagues and staff in the community to see what kind of support we can garner for those who'll be losing those benefits. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. Councilmember Landman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to say thank you to Tacoma Park Mobilization and others who hosted the community meeting several weeks ago, at which we all spoke together about how different levels of government and residents could work together to combat some of the threats to our community. And I wanted to thank them for summarizing very effectively what they hope to see from each level of government. And they were very clear about what the specific things they were hoping that the city government could work with them to achieve. But one of those things was that they were looking for access to spaces here in the community center and in other buildings and facilities that we had available. I've spoken with several people on the staff and with the mayor about that, and I think that we can find a way to accommodate the needs of some of those organizations within the parameters of the rules that we have. So please get in touch, and let's talk about how we can do that. I think that we all have the same interest in helping the groups that are helping our community to share those resources and make them available in ways that serve us all. And speaking of which, one of the things that serves us all, people helping their neighbors, is a fix-it clinic, brought to us by the Friends of the Tacoma Park Library. And the next fix-it clinic is scheduled for November 9th, and it will be in the library from 3:00 to 5:00 that afternoon. So please bring the things that are broken, and your neighbors will try and help you fix them and teach you how to fix them yourself next time. I hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Councilmember Schlegel?
Thank you. I first wanted to thank my colleagues and also everybody who came out to testify about the PBS, PBEs decision. I really appreciate the advocacy, and it's one step at a time. But it's hopeful that this community will continue to have a true community school as it was originally conceived. I also wanted to thank the members of the Police Chiefs Advisory Board, who invited me and Councilmember Landman to one of their monthly meetings, which was very informative and helpful to, not only to see how that board does its work, but also to discuss immigration and other issues that are pressing right now. This past weekend, we had 20-some residents in Pinecrest meet at the VFW. It was really encouraging. We had newer and longtime residents getting together just to speak about who they were, where they lived, how the neighborhood feels from their perspective. Lucy Moore was there, who was also a candidate for Ward Three last year. And we just had a great exchange, beginning to think about how the neighborhood might want to organize a little more and prioritize and create a vision. I have, I have been trying to encourage people to take advantage of the great input opportunities that are out there right now. By this Friday, October 31st, I'm hoping to see if there are any other suggestions for traffic calming devices or sidewalks that residents would like to bring forward. And the Pinecrest residents did have some hotspot intersections that they'd like to have the staff check into. And also, we're, we as council members have already been asked to consider second-tier potential stop sign camera locations should compliance go up at the first set of 11 intersections so that we can try the pilot elsewhere. And please, please, the budget survey is out for another couple of weeks. And it also, in addition to checkboxes, it also has places where residents can write a narrative saying exactly what they're thinking, and that's helpful. Last thing is a lot of opportunities to be involved with nature right now. Leave the leaves. If you're thinking about raking, be lazy. If you're thinking about leaf blowing, be lazy. Just let them be or mulch them. It's fall tree planting season. If you're interested, Casey Trees can help you out with that. And we have a couple of great opportunities in Ward Three to see the, to hear by Zoom about the Dorothy's Woods grant that's going to be used to upgrade that area. And then also a walking tour coming up on November 18th of the Sligo Mill Road improvements that were made. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. So I just want to also thank all of the folks that are here this evening. We'll have an opportunity to officially recognize our costume winners and have you come up on the stage. But I do just want to thank you all for being here, and I'll formally announce you a little after we get through with comments. But I do want to thank you all for coming. Thank you so much, Arthur, for your comments. I do want to give one piece of clarification, because this has come up before. When the council establishes its budget priorities and when we communicate a possible tax rate, it is not suggesting a final tax rate, but the tax rate that we are advising staff to use to present to council a budget. The final decision regarding the tax rate happens after the council has had multiple work sessions, deliberations, and amendments to the budget. So I do just want to make sure that that point is very clear. We often don't have a full understanding of what our tax rate will be until we are nearing the end of the budget deliberation process that happens in the spring. But I want to echo Councilmember Schlegel's desire to encourage folks to provide comments in response to the budget survey that's posted on our website, and it's gonna be open until noon on Wednesday, November 12th. I want to thank our Rec Department, Police Department, Public Works, everybody that helped to pull off the wonderful Monster Bash. It was really a wonderful event and just a great way to be in fellowship with our neighbors and to kind of break away for a short period of time with the crazy things that are happening right now. Also, Councilmember Landman and I had an opportunity to do the ribbon cutting last week for Terrific Inc. We're really excited to have this new nonprofit in our community, and they work to provide social service referrals to individuals in need of housing and things of that nature. And so we are super excited to have them here. Last night, was last night, I testified before MCPS as it relates to the capital improvement program for the Down County Consortium, of which we are a part of. And I know that we talk a lot about Piney Branch, but I think it's important for folks to realize that the CIP covers a lot. So as was mentioned, Piney Branch Elementary School, and I testified on these matters, but Piney Branch Elementary School was included, Eastern renovation, massive renovation was included, and so we're appreciative of that. HVAC improvements were included for Blair, Tacoma Park Middle, and New Hampshire Estates Elementary. There was also, as was mentioned, holding schools. There was also a proposal to to close the Silver Spring International Middle School or Sims. And I did acknowledge that there is a need for there to be more communication or, because residents simply don't know what this means for their children. And it's a little hard to say for sure, because we also have boundary studies that are going on right now, including the Wooten Boundary Study that will dictate where some people may go, depending on how that all shakes out. So definitely want to encourage residents. Oh, and another thing that I did mention, Roland Terrace was listed, Roland Terrace Elementary was listed by the superintendent as being in need of a major renovation, but it was not included in the CIP. And so I also wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that as well. I completely understand the amount of resources that are needed to bring all of our schools up to par. The stories, I just focused on Down County, but I was joined with representatives, the mayor from Rockville, the mayor from Gaithersburg, and they were talking about issues that are in their schools as well, and they're all the same story. Old buildings that are leaking, that have HVAC problems, that have mold problems, and there has been severe underinvestment in our school infrastructure. And so I want to encourage folks, again, to continue to advocate, to work with us as we are advocating, to make sure that all of our schools are getting the upgrades that they need. And what's coming up next? I will be attending the Youth Council meeting tomorrow, so looking forward to that, as well as the Essex House Youth Council Halloween Party that is on Friday. And then I will try to make the rounds this weekend to other neighborhood events to celebrate the festivities this weekend. With that, I am going to turn things over to, just want to check, Deputy City Manager Eubanks, are you doing the city manager comments this evening?
Yes, ma'am. City Manager DiSpirito is with us virtually. He is at the ICMA conference, but he is available during tonight's discussion. But I'll be handling the comments. From our Housing and Community Development Department, in June of 2025, the city was awarded $82,000 from the state of Maryland's Green Space Equity Program for improvements to Dorothy's Woods. The project will include improving public access, repairing stormwater infrastructure and improving drainage, the removal of invasive plants, and the installation of native trees, deer-resistant understory, and low metal. Learn more at the community meeting on Tuesday, November 4th, at 6:30 PM via Zoom. There's no need to register in advance. Visit tinyurl.com/dorothy-meet for more information and for the Zoom link. Pepco and Sustainable Maryland awarded the city a $16,000 resiliency grant through the 2025 Sustainable Communities Grant Program. The grant supports the development of the Tacoma Park Resiliency Hub, which will include coordinated planting and preparation tracks, resident input and programming that enhances resiliency, sustainability, and emergency preparedness. A final reminder to get your sidewalk and traffic calming request in for consideration as a part of the fiscal year 2027 budget process. You can submit a request online by searching for traffic calming requests on the city's website. The State Highway Administration has approved a traffic signal at Ritchie Avenue and Piney Branch Road. Design has been approved, funding is being identified, and construction is expected to begin at the end of FY27, which is in June 2027. 2027. The, excuse me, we would like to welcome Paloma Aruro Lefibre as the city's new housing manager. Paloma is joining the city from Bethesda Cares, where she worked to help alleviate homelessness in Montgomery County. Welcome, Paloma. From Public Works, the city of Tacoma Park has received a grant to start a pilot food waste collection service for multifamily housing properties. The Public Works Department is seeking a partner with four, seeking to partner with four multifamily properties to provide smart collection bins. Our new multifamily food waste collection pilot program will give apartment residents the opportunity to put their food scraps in compost bins instead of the landfill, preventing harmful greenhouse gas emissions and contributing to Tacoma Park's climate goals. Tenants who participate will also receive a free kitchen bin with compostable liners. Pickup and maintenance of the bins will be provided by Public Works staff. Interested property owners are asked to contact Dorothy Estrada at dorothye@tacompaparkmd.gov or by phone at 301-891-7623 by November 15th. Also, under Public Works, Montgomery Parks is completing repairs and updates to the Tacoma Urban Park. The playground area recently got a facelift with painting sprucing up and repairs to the slate walkway. The effort has now started at the gazebo area and will include removal of stumps and brick repairs and cleaning, replacement of the tables and benches, gazebo repairs to the concrete stairs, railing and lighting, as well as painting. The park will also receive a new sign. Deputy Director of Operations Gary Burnett noted, "We are glad we could make an impact in this park. Tacoma Park is a vibrant area, and the updates on this park will help to match the energy." From our Recreation Department, are you a federal employee or contractor affected by the current government shutdown? The Tacoma Park Recreation Department is here to support you. We're offering a free temporary fitness room membership to help you stay active, healthy, and connected during the challenging time. With your membership, you'll enjoy full access to our fully-equipped fitness room, a welcoming and supportive community, a great way to reduce stress and boost your well-being. Simply bring your current federal ID to the Tacoma Park Recreation Center to sign up. Stay strong, stay active. We're in this together. Please join us in welcoming our new teen program coordinator, Rayquan White. Rayquan recently joined the Recreation Department and will be dedicated to strengthening connections with teens while expanding the variety of activities and special programs offered through the teen program. With years of experience in mentorship, youth development, including time with both DC and Fairfax County Parks and Recreation Departments, Rayquan brings a deep passion for empowering and uplifting young people to help them reach their full potential. We're excited to have him on board and can't wait to see the positive impact he'll make. The Recreation Department is excited to announce that registration is open for our Futsal League and Winter Basketball League. Both seasons will begin in January, with practices starting in December. The registration fee is $100 for residents and $110 for non-residents. Scholarships are available. Don't miss the chance to be a part of the fun. Register today. And lastly, from our Recreation Department, the 2025 Monster Bash was held on Saturday, October 25th, and it was a tremendous success. A heartfelt thank you goes out to everyone who assisted, volunteered, or contributed in any way to make this event such a memorable one. Your work, hard work, and enthusiasm helped create a fun and festive experience for all who attended. This event is a major collaboration with the Recreation Department, Police, and Public Works. And finally, from our City Manager's Office, the budget forum, as was discussed earlier, is going to be held on November 17th at 7:00 PM. It is solely virtual. There will not be a in-person component this year. And this week's shout-out goes to Chelsea Nunez and John Webster from our Recreation Department. Earlier today, when one of our Temporary Sanitation Division employees from Public Works was injured during his shift and brought to the community center, Chelsea and John, our resident CPR and first aid trainers, jumped into action. They provided first aid, contacted emergency services, and ensured the employee received immediate care. By the time EMT arrived, all they could do was note the excellent job already done. The employee was later cleared by urgent care and will return to work tomorrow, thanks in large part to Chelsea and John's calm professionalism and quick thinking. Thank you both for exemplifying teamwork, care, and preparedness at its finest. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy City Manager Eubanks.
A quick point of information, just could you tell us the size of the multifamily units that would be eligible for the for the composting program?
That's information that I'd have to get from Ms. Estrada.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Eubanks, because I misspoke earlier about the Budget Forum and clarifying that it will be virtual. I also want to remind my colleagues that staff has issued a council budget survey, and our responses are due for, due on November the 5th. So I do want to remind all of my colleagues that the budget survey for council members is also in your inbox and due on November the 5th. Okay, so with that, I am going to move to our resolution, our first item this evening, Resolution Calling for a Fun and Safe, October 31st. And I also want to acknowledge our Monster Bash winners. Eliana Cornwell. Wonderful. We're gonna have you come up in a minute as twist, as a twister. Was the winner of the Teens Adults Most Original. And Asahana as a jellyfish. Which is very good, very good jellyfish. And they won the Nine to Twelve Most Original. And then we also had a winner for the Literary Award winner. And Anika Jeff and Saparna De Jonas as the Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe. Wonderful. And so, as was mentioned, we wanted to make sure this evening that we were able to recognize October 31st, but also remind everyone of the importance of being safe on this day. And so I just want to make sure that there's, okay. I'll go ahead and read through the resolution just to make sure that everybody knows what it says, because I know this came through over the course of the weekend. And also get ready to invite our winners up to the stage. Come on up, come on up, it's okay. Come on up, you can come behind the dais if you can fit.
Yeah, I don't know about that jellyfish.
I'll read the proclamation, I'll read the resolution, and then from there. Come on around. You made it. You made it. Wonderful. Excellent. Wonderful. Okay, resolution calling for a Fun and Safe October 31st, 2025. Whereas the Tacoma Park 2025-2026 City Council priorities include a goal to advance the community, advance a community of safety and belonging. And whereas the city recognizes Tacoma Park as, I'm sorry, the city recognized October as National Pedestrian Safety Month to help prevent pedestrian injuries and fatalities. And whereas the evening of October 31st, 2025 is a time when many residents will engage in traditions that include decorations, wearing costumes, and trick-or-treating. And whereas on this day, drivers encounter more pedestrians, including children who may be out trick-or-treating on their own or in groups. And whereas the safety and well-being of children and youth enjoying the festivities of October 31st is important to our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the city, the council of the city of Tacoma Park encourages, one, residents participating in trick-or-treat activities to leave an outdoor light on and display decorations. Two, trick-or-treaters encourages trick-or-treaters to make sure that they are visible to drivers by wearing reflective or bright costumes or carry flashlights. Encourages trick-or-treaters to put safety first by traveling in groups or with an adult, use sidewalks, and inspect candy before eating. And four, drivers to slow down on neighborhood streets and watch out for pedestrians. Be it further resolved that the Tacoma Park City Council wishes residents participating in October 31st festivities a fun and safe evening. And so with that, who would like to move the resolution calling for a Fun and Safe October 31st? Thank you, Councilmember Dibala. Do you have a second? Thank you, Councilmember Hansak for seconding. All those in favor of this resolution, and you all can join us and please say aye.
Come on up to the mic. You can lean forward. You want to come over right here?
All those in favor, please say aye. You have any opposed? Any abstained? Wonderful. So the resolution passes. Thank you all so much.
Let's make sure we can go around to the front and take photos really quickly, especially given all of our costumes.
Oh, wonderful. Yes, you have comments? You can have my chair, but you can't sit. Come on.
Hello, hi, my name's Eliana Cornwell. I live in Ward Three. And I I go trick-or-treating every year. And when I moved here, I was made aware that there is a play that is put on every year in Ward One and at the meeting of Tulip and Cedar. And I would like to ask that there be some some roadblocks put up or some kind of barrier, because I know that a large crowd gets gathered every year of children. And it's so large that it flows into the street. And I would go and recommend that there be some kind of thing to stop cars from going there. It starts at eight and goes for about 30 minutes, so just like maybe a little bit before eight, somebody goes and puts down a roadblock and then goes and takes it off like after the play is over. So, yeah, that, that's, that's the only thing.
Thank you very much for your comments. And so now we're going to take our, our photo, everybody, come on around.
I love the slippers.
These were, for Halloween, we always do matching pajamas, my entire family. And one year, my nephews, they took the initiative to pick out slippers for everyone, and so we all have these little shoes.
All right. Excellent. All right. All right, so we're gonna move on with the, with the meeting this evening, with the next item, the First Reading Ordinance Amending the Tacoma Park Code Regarding the Use of the City Seal or Logo. And so with that, I am going to pass the discussion over to, I just want to see, Deputy City Manager Eubanks, are you leading this one?
We can recap?
Yep, I believe that there were some modifications that were made in response to comments that were raised during the last work session on this item. And I think it might be helpful just to remind members of council what those modifications were. I'm happy to do so if that would be helpful for, for staff.
I can do it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have the memo in front of me. We sent, we sent the memo before council. Each of the points that was revised was addressed in it, but just for restating that, the code amendment is not to be interpreted as applying to the city of Tacoma Park flag or presentations thereof. So that way, we can eliminate any potential confusion regarding the application of the ordinance to the city flag and avoids any potential First Amendment concerns. As well as the, so the city clerk would also be made the custodian who can, would be, would then have the ability to delegate delegates custodianship of the city logo and seal. The chief of police is the custodian of the city Tacoma Park Police logo, and it's to stick uses. And the city custodian must provide written approval for use of the city seal or logo. And then the violation for improper use of the city seal or logo will be listed as a Class B misdemeanor to allow the city additional flexibility to treat the violation, also as a Class A municipal infraction, which would constitute a $500 fine for the initial offense. So those were the, the only changes.
Great. Thank you so much. And so with that, we'll move this item. Would someone like to move the First Reading Ordinance Amending the Tacoma Park Code Regarding the Use of the City Seal or Logo?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Westleak. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert, as a second. Are there any points of discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Aye.
Yes. Councilmember Schlegel?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansak?
Aye.
Councilmember Westley?
Councilmember.
Oh, Council, Councilmember Landman, sorry.
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. We're gonna move on to our General Assembly update and discussion of legislative priorities. We're joined this evening by our lobbyists in Annapolis, Ann Seacott.
Good evening, everyone, and y'all look great. As you can tell, I'm dressed as a lobbyist. Here tonight to do a pretty high-level brief overview of the priority, the priorities that you all set last year. And kind of again, a high-level look at what's ahead, knowing full well that we don't know what's all ahead. So, but as we go along, happy to entertain questions. So, all right. So, so couch in the, as you've done in the past, your legislative priorities, the broad goals that you all have set, and acknowledging a few tweaks to some of the words used. I underlined and bolded the words that you've added to enhance the priorities that you have. For advancing a community of safety and belonging, there were a set of priorities, more specific priorities listed from last year related to legislation, continuing efforts to protect immigrant community, the immigrant community and services that folks need. And looking ahead, there were, looking at the last session, there were some pieces of legislation that did pass. There were some things that did not. And so in terms of what we should be looking forward to this coming session, it includes a revisiting of a prohibition on the 286, 287G agreements that local jurisdictions enter into with ICE. We are expecting, there's going to be a very close examination related to the sensitive locations. And if we, if there are gaps that need to be addressed, that need to be filled, legislators, including those from District 20, are willing to move forward and try to amend the law. And I have been told there'll probably be something, I don't know the specifics yet, related to the data privacy protections for immigrants.
What was the first one? Second one was, second one was sensitive locations. What was the first one?
The 287G, the agreements for local law enforcement to cooperate with ICE. One of your priorities has been also protecting and affirming LGBTQ rights and funding for programs. And I will say that from what I understand, moving for the coming year, I should couch everything in terms of, I don't know everything. So, but, but what I've been able to glean is that there's gonna be a lot of defense in a lot of areas, including in this area, specifically related to making sure to protect the gender-affirming care advances that have been made in state law, needing to protect those, especially when it comes to Medicaid, and ensuring that folks have access to healthcare that they need. Related to the federal workforce, I believe that's gonna be a very hot topic. And I believe that we will hear ongoing efforts to try to provide assistance to folks that are either furloughed or, you know, fired or, you know, whatever kind of disengagement they, they may have from employment. And then related to restrictive covenants, that was one of your priorities last year. And we got it done. So, yay for that. Related to fiscally sustainable government, we always talk about the local revenues and what can be done. And there wasn't a lot of advancement in that last session, but there absolutely is going to be a much bigger focus. And the Maryland Municipal League has, I think, dealt with this in various ways over the last few years, maybe longer. And this year, they're just putting a singular focus on trying to reform the taxing structures for local governments, for municipal governments. So that's something that we'll find more detail about as some of the details of that gets finalized. Protecting highway user revenues is an annual thing that MML does a great job protecting, working with, collaborating with, and protecting municipalities for that revenue stream. And then looking for more efficiencies in the state tax code. What I can say is that we have a year, and we can talk a little bit more about this if you're interested, where the budget picture is incredibly uncertain. We, we, we don't know what the, how long the government shutdown lasts, what the, you know, impact would be in the short term. I think it changes day by day. So, so I think that, that looking for, you know, significant movement in providing tax relief may not be fiscally feasible for the state government. And, but understand that even if it wasn't an election year, but, but even more so because it's an election year, legislators and the governor will be looking for ways to try to help protect people, help protect families. And I think there's gonna be a tremendous amount of focus on things, especially healthcare, and whether that's private insurance or Medicaid. And then there was just a briefing on my way over here just before coming over here from Annapolis. from Annapolis, a lot of attention on SNAP. And I actually think that, that food assistance is something we're going to be hearing a lot about in the coming hours and days to see what the state, how the state can respond to that. On environmentally sustainable communities, you all have always done a great job looking to, working really closely with a lot of the folks who are in the forefront of advocacy related to environmental issues and energy issues. And you'll see in this slide, the, the top priorities from last session. This coming session, what, some of the focus, some of the focus will be returning to things that didn't pass last session, including the CHERISH Act. If anybody really wants the name of that acronym, I, I wrote it down, it's really long. But just know that it has to do with environmental justice and the permitting process and the public's access to, to information related to that. Protecting the budget is going to be big, and that's for every area, but that certainly is going to be verbalized by the environmental community, advocacy community as a top priority. Also, there are going to be various solar initiatives, there is going to be an emphasis to try to align transportation and climate goals as well. And then finally, adding housing to the community development for an improved and equitable quality of life. There has been a priority that you continue to have, which you should, about meeting Vision Zero goals. We did have success in '25 with the stop sign camera bill, the pilot that's taking place in, in Tacoma Park that, that Councilmember Schlegel mentioned earlier. And there will be a reintroduction of a bill related to speed limits and being able to lower them without the engineering studies required. And I'm sure there'll be other initiatives as well. Related to the liquor store concentration issue that came up last year, again, success. The bill that was introduced by Delegate Charcutian didn't pass, but there was a, more work that happened after the legislative session. And I think in a great example of not everything gets fixed by a bill, by changing statute, she was able to work with the board and they decided to address this in regulation, and they have put forth some new language in regulation that seems to address the, the issue of the concentration of licenses. And then related to housing and housing development and tenant protections, good cause eviction is absolutely coming back. I know that Delegate Wilkins is going to work really hard to make sure that gets through this year. We do expect there'll be some legislation to, to see if, if there can be some advancement of the recommendations coming from the task force from the Melanie Nicole Diaz Fire Safety Act that the city championed. And we know that the State Department of Housing and Community Development is putting forth a package of legislation that the Housing Department here in the city is taking a look at to, to see how it may or may not benefit the, the city. So again, very high level, what we're looking at for the budget, for the state budget for fiscal '27, the fiscal analysts said in a hearing a month ago, well, things will be, you know, okay, it's a manageable deficit for the coming year, I'm sorry, for, yeah, for, for '27. And the, a lot of the major changes coming from the federal government passed in HR1 are really going to hit more significantly, the, the state budget in FY '28. But all of that was before the shutdown. And I think that that picture may very well change as we get closer to January, when they really do figure out what the impact is on state revenue and unemployment insurance and, and the rest. So, and the, the economic impact of the shutdown. So, so that's still all a big question mark. As far as the capital budget goes, as of right now, there was a decision made a couple weeks ago that the capital budget should remain the same as last year, so no less. And in talking to your representatives from District 20, they are absolutely happy to talk with you about priority related to capital assistance. And then it's an election year, and election years are always, always come with a twist. And so that's just to be aware of. And where we can take advantage of it to benefit the residents of city, of the city of Tacoma Park, great. And, and, and more will come after that.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much, Ann. I know that there's been a, a lot of uncertainty, and I appreciate how much you have, have worked to engage with our D-20 delegation, our staff, myself, to try to start as early as we can, given the, the level of uncertainty that exists, and to try to get as much information as we can upfront to put us in a better place to be able to, to advocate for the priorities of the city. So just to kind of help my colleagues with understanding how this process will work, as a reminder, we, we will have another work session to finalize our legislative priorities. We are slated to have a, our conference or a meeting with District 20 on December the 3rd. The goal of Ann's presentation today is to just kind of give everybody a quick update in terms of the things that we had put forward last year in terms of priorities and kind of what the current thought is in terms of what may be available in terms of resources and what may be happening in Annapolis. We will then, after you have an opportunity to ask Ann questions about what she's presented, I've been, over the course of just discussions that we've been having, compiling a list of possible legislative items that I want to just kind of walk people through globally, and then we'll have some, an actual write-up for you all to take a look at. And I would like to get some feedback in terms of certain areas where I know it is typically a priority, but I'm not exactly sure what the, what the, the specific legislative ask that we have in terms of those priorities are. So with that, I'm going to just pause to see if there are any questions for Ann based on the presentation that she just gave. Councilmember Landman?
Just quickly, there were a couple of environmental bills that I heard that the governor had vetoed, that I think were, at least for some of our residents that are active in this sphere, that were, that I wonder if you could just summarize quickly so that we know where the, where we might have had a two steps forward and one step back.
So I'm, the one that I recall is the Renew Act around energy renewal, renewal, a study around energy. And I know that that one, there's going to be an effort to try to overturn that one. I didn't come prepared to, to remember what the other one is, I apologize. I know that they're not related to the environment, I, I certainly know that there was the issue of reparations. That was a bill that the governor vetoed, that I think there's discussion about whether or not there will be an override.
And I just want to let the tech team know that I can't see when people, I'm not, I'm not seeing when anyone turns on their mic. So I'm going to have to, if folks can just raise your finger if you have a live. Okay. Councilmember Hansak?
I just have a quick one. I would, I would really love it if you wouldn't mind sharing perhaps in writing a little bit more about the issue you mentioned with the liquor licenses and how that was resolved, so I can share that with my community.
Absolutely, absolutely, I'll get you the language.
Okay, Councilmember Schlegel?
Thank you, Ms. Seacott. You mentioned the good cause eviction legislation will be reintroduced, and I was wondering whether you have any sense of, of what new strategies may be attempted this year, what the prospects might be for that?
I think there's been a lot of effort over the interim to have greater discussion, more detailed discussions with Chair, the Chair of the Judicial Proceedings Committee, Will Smith, who's D-20. And trying to understand, I think, some of the, where, where and where not, there's an intersection between good cause eviction law and other rent stabilization efforts like vacancy control. So there's just been a, a lot of dialogue. There's also been a lot of community organizing that's been happening in Montgomery County and Prince George's County to try to get the bill through. There, there still needs to be some work, I think, as well with the Senate President in helping him understand the, 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 that interplay and assuring that good cause, there's, there's not only no evidence that good cause eviction laws are a barrier to housing development, but there's actually some academic research that sort of shows it really doesn't have an impact. And I'm happy to share any of that if you're interested.
Thank you. And you mentioned that the MML sole priority this year is going to be revenue streams. And so do you think that that, that suggests that municipalities with other legislative priorities will need to be strategizing differently?
No, no, I think, so, so, so the Maryland Municipal League always has a limited sort of proactive package, but that doesn't stop them from being very engaged on all other legislation that impacts municipalities or that comes from municipalities.
Thanks.
They, they, they've got really good staff and a lot of folks that work really hard.
Excellent. Councilmember, and, and my screen is fixed now, so.
Oh, right.
Councilmember Westleak, thank you very much, team.
Thank you so much, this is really helpful, I'm looking forward to what's to come. I just wanted to raise a couple points related to the LGBTQ community. And so I, I know that our state has a lot of strong protection, so it makes sense what you're saying about us maybe playing defense. So I know especially for transgender, non-binary community, there's a lot of fear. So I just wanted to lift two things. One, that there's also data privacy for that community, that I don't know if, I don't know where that fit, it's, it's already covered or not, but just, just lifting that up as well as making sure that our definitions of gender-affirming care is as broad as possible. That's not just medical, you know, medicine and procedures like that, it's just being treated with respect and honored in those ways is care. So I'm mainly just sharing this for my colleagues, but I definitely look forward to seeing if there's any movement on that. I would definitely be interested in, in knowing about it.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, all right. Not seeing any other lights. So just as a, a quick reminder for folks, typically when we are presenting to D-20, we try to present a capital project as well as legislative priorities. We'll focus on the legislative priorities, but I will say staff has recommended that we try, and Ann has been in conversations with folks about trying to get an, an LBI for the Metropolitan Branch Trail project. So there still may be other, other projects, folks are, we're trying to work early and staff are, are thinking about things, but that is one item that we are thinking about proposing. The two priority ideas is the Metropolitan Branch Trail and the new Ave Bike Way project. But the idea is to move forward with one. So in terms of legislative priorities, in the bucket that I'm calling housing and social service support, I'm assuming we're going to keep.
Fighting the good fight on just cause eviction.
So we're keeping that there. One item that we put forward as a LAR request for MML, and it didn't fly, was SNAP support, particularly offering double SNAP, expanding the Maryland Market Money Program, which provides extras, funds for SNAP recipients to purchase fresh produce at farmers' markets. And so the idea was to get them to expand to include grocery stores. I did, and I did mention this idea to Delegate Charcutian, but there are states like Alabama that are, that offer, they participate in the double up bucks where they offer up to $10 at a grocery store to use at the customer's next shopping visit, and $20 for free fruits and vegetables at farmer's market. The, farmer's market's the idea being providing more year-round opportunities to have the SNAP multiplier. We have at the Crossroads Farmer's Market as well as Tacoma Park Farmer's Market, they both offer double SNAP benefits for fresh fruits and vegetables. And we also, through the USDA, the, the co-op was offering double SNAP benefits. But one thought that, that I have is if we're trying to think through ways to increase SNAP, there may be some options that are a little, maybe a little more cost-effective, maybe, such as increasing the multiplier for fresh fruits and vegetables and providing more outlets through like grocery store partnerships to allow for that to happen. I do, I am assuming that will, what like, what is, will more likely than not continue to move forward is modifications at the federal level in terms of eligibility for SNAP. So there may be a need to also think about, similar to how states may treat Medicaid with offering some expansions using its own funds, we may want to consider as well offering some additional eligibility buckets for, for SNAP. So those are just some ideas, but I, I'm including SNAP as a bucket. Thank you, Councilmember Westleak, for, for bringing up data privacy. I did include the protect gender-affirming care in Medicaid as, as an item, but I also think that the data privacy point is a good one, and I think we can do some, some digging into that. And so those are the three items for the housing and social service support. For, I'm going to skip the local business growth and economic development. Staff has proposed WSC site plan review. That may be something that's not necessarily legislative to fix, so I don't want to waste everybody's time, but the immigrant protections and community safety, the 287G program, which was already mentioned, we'll also need to look into data privacy. One thing that I know, and we've talked at length about, and I thank you for following up with folks, is food distribution locations being included as sensitive, on the sensitive locations list, and making sure that there's some clarity there, not just as it relates to the distribution of food being, like, you need food to live, so it's like health, it's, you know, like in education. But also the location, the types of locations that would be covered, given that unlike in a hot, well, actually, this goes beyond food. In locations like outdoor medical clinics, outdoor food distribution locations, like making sure that it's not just about the brick and mortar, the brick and mortar school, the brick and mortar hospital, and the brick and mortar, you know, nonprofit that's offering food, but also parking lots or outdoor activities that may include these activities as well. So it's kind of two-pronged. One, making sure that food distribution locations are clearly included as a sensitive location, and then two, making sure that when these types of activities are, are occurring outdoors, that those parking lots, those non-brick-and-mortar locations would also be considered sensitive. So that's one area. And then the other area is immigration enforcement identification. So what can happen at the state level in terms of making sure ICE are identified, that they're not masked, those kinds of things. And then immigration enforcement identification. It is, so it's described as immigration state law that prohibits officers from wearing masks and requiring them to identify themselves. So it'd be, you know, making sure cars are marked, clear identification on the vest as well as unmasked. No, that does not include body cams, and that is a good point. I will make sure that's there.
License plates.
I'm sorry?
License plates. Something I've been hearing news about ICE agents blacking out there, license plates.
Yeah. So that's really about the bucket for them identifying themselves. We, so the next bucket is municipal revenue and other protections. This is another item that may not be legislative, but we put forward MML LAR about dealing with property damage caused by utility service. And I know Delegate Charcutian, I know, has been involved in that. Again, I'm not sure if it's a legislative change that's needed, but I didn't want to lose that thought and knowing that there's still work that's happening in that regard. And of course, you know, encouraging District 20 to support the MML legislative priority for modernizing municipal revenue structures. And so expanding a little bit, because I know during the last legislative session for MML, it was also about sales tax, amusement tax, F and B, food and beverage, I should say. I'm not exactly sure if they're going to still take that angle this time, so I don't know what you may have heard, but.
I was told by MML staff that it's all still in development.
Okay. Because I feel like we've tried a lot of angles to get money, so I'm interested to see what the new angle will be. But, oh no, we've already done cannabis. I tried.
Sin tax.
Oh, yeah. Well, we did the sin tax through the actual activities, so that's how we got the, if you have a dispensary, you get some of that money. I was asking about tobacco. Like, can we get a cut of the alcohol tax? So, yeah, there's definitely a need for additional clarity, but we want to make sure that we have that clarity and can tell District 20, like, we support this as well. And then the, for transportation, we had put forward under an LAR to, and this kind of can go into either one of these buckets, but enabling municipalities to charge utilities for the use of their right-of-way. This is one that we may need to try to float by some folks to see whether or not it's a legislative thing, but that is something that we did move forward under the, under MML. And I have just a write-in here in terms of speed limit lowering. I think this is a topic of discussion for us in terms of whether or not, and also following up with with city staff and Darrow about the speed limit lowering without a traffic study and whether or not that's something we definitely want to make sure. I believe we've said multiple times, yes, we want. And so now it's just really about trying to figure out, how do we do it?
And. I did get feedback from somebody about what the other bills that were vetoed were that I thought we were supporting. If I could just put that back on the table. The Data Center Impact Study.
Right.
And the Energy Resource Adequacy Planning Act. And both of those are going to be helpful to us in meeting our state climate goals and for emissions. Energy Resource Adequacy Planning Act, whether we're going to have sufficient generating capacity in the state of Maryland.
And thank you, Councilmember Lamont, because environmental, I just have TBD, because I wasn't sure what we want at all. So the Renew Act, and Councilmember Lamont, can you repeat one more time the data center?
The Data Center Impact Study.
Impact Study.
And the Energy Resource Adequacy Planning Act. And the third one was the one that was mentioned earlier, which was Cherish, which I also will not try and remember what the acronym is for.
Are we speaking about environmental stuff?
Yes, we are on environmental stuff.
Okay, so I'm not so sure about Cherish, because we passed on it last time, I think. I'll check, I forgot. But the Renew Act and the raiding of climate money for general budget purposes, both of those are of interest to the city.
Okay. Councilmember Schlegel?
I would like to propose maybe the new Maryland Department of the Environment stormwater regulations are likely to require localities like ours to develop comprehensive plans for the entire jurisdiction. And I wonder whether it might be something where the state could provide some planning funds for that through legislation. I thought of that initially because I noticed there wasn't anything about the Chesapeake Bay in here, so, yeah.
And this is helpful, because this is one area where Anne and I had been chatting. We're like, we're not really seeing like the lobby, the big organizations, the advocacy groups kind of coming out with their wish list just yet.
At least not like published on their websites.
Yeah.
Things are, I mean, this is the right time, that everybody is finalizing priorities, just like you are, and deciding what are the things to be moving forward with.
And so it sounds like, just to make sure I'm clear, for environmental, it would be helpful for us to look into and kind of poke around about those vetoed bills, environmental bills last go around, to see if we can get any intel on, you know, where folks are with them.
We do know that CICAN has already made Renew one of their primary.
Oh, they have?
Yeah. And we know that the environmental groups are looking at the data piece, and I don't know about the other set.
Okay.
Protecting the Strategic Energy Investment Fund is also on the list.
But again, I'm not sure that was one for us.
No, I'm just saying, when you were asking what the environmental organizations are going to be targeting, that's one I hear from.
Okay.
So Cherish, very broadly, is about environmental justice and cumulative impacts on heavily impacted communities from multiple environmental threats, like, you know, six, you know, data centers all hovering around one community and the cumulative impacts on, yeah. That's my 30-second review with the help of AI, but also with the help of the League of Conservation voters.
Awesome. Councilmember DeBala, is that an old light?
Yes.
Let's hit that light. Councilmember Schlegel, is that an old light?
It's a new one. I wanted to circle back to immigration. This might be seeming too dire, but everything we're hearing is that the pace of detaining people is going to go up dramatically. And I'm concerned that, no, I'm not sure if anyone in our state or any other level of government in the state has the ability to go visit and inspect the detention centers where our residents are being taken. And I would be interested to support, for the legislature to support legislation that would make that a right for maybe certain designated elected officials to arrange inspection of any facility where detainee's been taken and/or visit any known Maryland resident who has been detained and has been moved to another state for detention.
I think that that's something that we can look into. I'm not sure whether or not there are state authorities or federal, but can poke around and see.
I think there's a growing list of questions to ask of the Attorney General's office.
All right. Councilmember Westlech?
Thank you. And I'm not sure if this is the right time, but I just wanted to put out there that, you know, I sit on the Transportation Planning Board for the MW COG, and there was recently a very controversial bill that was put forward about extending toll lanes on 495, starting in Virginia and then ending in Maryland. I'm just flagging it, because I don't know if there might be some kind of legislation around not letting outside jurisdictions build toll lanes in our state or something. Apparently it was unprecedented, and it failed. It did not go through, they're still working on it, everyone. But I'm just flagging that, that if anything comes up about that, I'd love to hear about it.
I will.
All right. All right, so. All right. So in terms of next steps, so two things. Thank you all so much for this feedback. I will take this back, make some edits, and then send the draft documents out to folks so that you can add some, so that we can be better prepared when we have our conversation next week in terms of, is it next week? In terms of.
I think we gave it a couple.
It is the following week, so it will be on, yes, it is on November the 12th. So we'll have some time. And then this way, folks will have something to kind of take a look at, do some research, and then we can talk about modifications. Just as a reminder, the goal is to not have this massive list we need to try to get through, but to really try to make sure that we're identifying the priority items that we want D20 to focus their energies on during this legislative session. And so we'll move forward in that way. Also, on the meeting on November the 12th, I will be asking for volunteers for the Legislative Working Group. This time around, I just want to make sure that, I know that Councilmember DeBala, Landman, and Westlech served last time. And so we'll be looking for folks that would be willing to volunteer. If that same group is willing to do it, awesome. If there are others that may be interested, let me know. Just as a reminder for people who have not been able to be a part of that group in the past, the bills come fast and furiously over the course of session, so I just want to make sure that folks are aware of that as you are considering your participation. Okay, I think that's it. Awesome. Well, thank you so much, Anne, I really appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Your costume was very convincing.
All right. So the last item that we have this evening is the development and implementation of a community connectors model.
Okay, should I start?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, councilmembers and Madam Mayor. So I'm just going to introduce this topic. Two weeks ago, on October 15th, we came to you and we provided a presentation on community connectors. Since then, we received a lot of feedback from the councilmembers and the mayor. And we have revised, we are recasting the presentation where we've added more information, more detailed. We've gone back to old materials to provide a reference for the councilmembers that may have not been here before, and also for those of us who are new employees, relatively new, to provide sort of as a background as to where we are today. So thank you all for your comments. We will also be, we have included in the packet a draft resolution, just for your review and consideration. It's not ready to be introduced today, but we will, we would like your feedback on it. And the purpose of the resolution is, at some point, we would like to have, we'd like to achieve a consensus amongst the council on what the purpose of the community connectors are, what the vision is that you all see. And then that will then be our working scope that we will move forward with. And then, yeah, again, tonight, the goal of this meeting is to give you a background, to give you where we are today, what our next steps are. And hopefully, at the end of the night, we would like to walk away from this meeting with a consensus on where everybody is with regards to the scope of the, of the community connectors program. The delivery model, which can be, delivery model could include, or has included in the past, potential on-staff folks, navigators. We are also, you will see our proposal, that we are looking at other models as well. We don't have a decision on which model we're going to go with. The NLC, as you all know, will be helping us and informing us on the models that would work best for us, which we will bring before you. So Ryan, I'm going to turn it to Ryan to do the presentation, to walk you through the presentation. I would like to ask that, allow Ryan to go through his presentation, hold your questions, and then I will turn it over to the mayor to open up the meeting for a discussion. Ryan?
All right, thank you very much. And I want to first apologize, my Lorax costume did not come in time. So I am in suit and tie. So first off, the purpose, and you'll recognize a lot of these slides from the, I guess it was two weeks ago, presentation. The purpose tonight, again, to go over with council and overview what community connectors program is, what it could entail, and some examples of community connectors from other jurisdictions and communities. And then as well as a brief counsel on the vision. And we're going to go through both the vision as it was conceived back when we received ARPA funding and we were allocated a specific amount of money to help try and envision what the community connectors program might look like, and then also what it might look like today, based on the changing landscape. There's also the potential for community connectors program model under consideration. We have a couple of different models that have been proven effective in different jurisdictions, municipalities, and as well as strategies for a community connectors model program, and then staff recommendations for next steps. And we will seek your direction then on those next steps. So what is community connectors program? And just for some additional background for those of us who are, you know, new to what community connectors could entail. So it's a community-based initiative that will help connect residents to resources and engage with services, and it often has a focus on equity and community building. Community connectors can include specific program areas. So you'll see in some models, there are a specific focus on whether it be health initiatives, community planning initiatives, infrastructure programs that communities are trying to implement. So there are a lot of different things. Sometimes community connectors can be very issue-focused. Sometimes community connectors can be specific individuals who are connecting individuals to resources and services. And sometimes you will see it as organizations that link people to resources and services. And then sometimes you will see those organizations who serve as kind of the centralized hub for the community connector offer stipends. So you'll see here, there's a couple of different examples of community connectors in different jurisdictions, as I mentioned before. Longmont, Colorado, is, they have a Neighborhood Group Leaders Association model, which consists of many various community groups, organizations who meet with the city on a regular basis, and they identify concerns, discuss what are the issues of most importance to the community, and then work together to implement different solutions to address those issues that they have identified. So there you have a much more organization-focused approach. Boulder, Colorado, which I believe served as part of the model for the initial concept. Boulder, Colorado, which I believe served as part of the model for the initial concept of what Community Connectors was, has individual Community Connectors who are assigned on a volunteer basis to identify very specific projects and activities. So they've done things like working on strategic plans for their city, revitalization projects, hiring campaigns. So, and they receive stipends. And so again, you see they're very specific focus on what those Community Connectors are connecting individuals to. The Maryland Community Connection, this one provides social and economic independent living services to adults with developmental disabilities in the state of Maryland. So you have an individual Community Connector who are assigned to participants and provide support to those individuals and coaching. They, the organization recruits and trains these volunteers as Community Connectors. And then in Rockville, nearby in Montgomery County, we have the, there's a school-based collaboration among the Montgomery County Department of Health and Human Services, MCPS, and nonprofits, as well as community-based service providers. This links services to, to at-risk childrens and their, at-risk children and their families to help improve adjustment to, to improve adjustment to school, home, and community. And part of the work includes prevention and early intervention services, including health, mental health, social services, and educational support. While this is not necessarily known as Community Connectors Program, it serves a similar purpose and function. So to take us to kind of what that original concept of what Community Connectors was back in 2022, when we received the 17.4 million in ARPA funding, council identified Community Connectors as a priority and initially allocated $350,000 total to be, to help fund this initiative. The initial concept really revolved around the couple of main key points. Improving community engagement with harder-reach groups, distributing information about government programs, and creating two-way dialogue, as well as obtaining community input beyond what our existing tools are. And it helped inform what is in that scope at the bottom there. And one of the most important things from there is you'll see identifying, connecting individuals, individual community members to social services at the city, county, state, and federal levels. City will employ a lead navigator and several part-time navigators to assist with this. And so that's where the initial concept really stemmed from. And very specific services also identified in, and I, it's important to remember that this is in the ARPA lens. So with a focus on what the COVID pandemic, the challenges coming with the COVID pandemic. So many of the services were focused on health, health education, food distribution, utility assistance, mental health counseling, financial assistance. So for example, we had the Direct Cash Assistance Program, connecting people to direct cash assistance so that they could receive that kind of funding. So there was a very specific focus in mind there. Today, we have kind of evolved this vision to adapt to the changing needs. And this includes recommendations from the Public Safety Task Force. You might remember, one of the recommendations was to have a community outreach coordinator. And so these are one of the things that we're hoping to address with Community Connectors, and being able to connect residents to these social services and resources, as well as involve a greater two-way dialogue and increase community engagement and participation in civic life. So the realignment basically is same, same core purpose, assisting residents in identifying and accessing resources and social services. But now the focus is on bridging the divide between community groups and the city by serving as liaisons between the city, service providers, and residents. So we're still hoping to reach and engage with those historically underrepresented groups through the utilization of best practices and community-centric models. And then potentially developing a network of nonprofits, business associations, grassroots community groups, faith-based organizations, and so on, and so forth. Basically, a network of organizations that are serving the community to help, and empowering those community organizations to be the connectors to, to those resources and social services. And then as well as potentially incorporating in-person meetings, community gatherings that help further reinforce the civic engagement and participation in civic life. Here, just to help kind of visualize what the overlap is and the differences, you can see 2023, the FY 2023 concept, you have connecting individuals and households to social services at the city, county, and state, and federal levels. The lead navigators who are employed by the city, and then assisting residents in identifying those social services. There is an overlap there. You'll see, we're still trying to accomplish the same thing in the concept today, but now we're looking at potentially forming a network of those community organizations and building both our internal capacity and with the realization of our very real staff limitations and very real external organization limitations, building both our internal and external capacity to serve a similar function. And then just a potential model of what this can look like, and it's just a concept here, but you have the Cities to Come Park at the center, branched out with different Community Connectors. This might be, you know, the community organizations that are branching out to a wider group of community organizations, whether it be faith-based, business associations, nonprofits, grassroots groups, and then, and so on and so forth. But this is how we envision potentially bridging those groups that are doing the great work going on in the city and bringing it back to the central point in the city and help so we can empower them to, to reach more people and build trust.
Just one thing to add, Ryan, if you can go back to that slide. We don't have landlords here, but landlords are an important component of this. So they could be included as the business association, or we could have another, another tab for, for just the landlords.
Sorry. Yeah. And that's, that's an important, in the tenant association, we, we would, just to get into specifics, we would look to engage with tenant associations. Of course, you would need to work with landlords to be able to do that, inform tenant associations. That's one of the great functions that our housing department does and build, and helping assist in forming tenant associations. So that's a key component as well. So, and then just to give a little, a little more background on what the NLC Community Engagement Academy would entail. So in July, we advised council that we were exploring options to help develop and assist residents in identifying and accessing our resource, the resources and social services available to residents. And we submitted a successful application to the National League of Cities Community Engagement Academy for technical assistance and training to help build our internal and external capacity with, with our participating organizations. And also, we were one of six cities, including, and I know someone asked this last time, it was Aurora, Illinois, Fort Collins, Colorado, New Haven, Indiana, North Charleston, South Carolina, and Richmond, Virginia. So the objectives remain to clarify needs, develop strategies, and identify what the key components are for developing Community Connectors infrastructure. We are also hoping to determine what the best model is to connect residents to services and resources, develop that infrastructure and internal systems that promote clear, authentic communication and two-way dialogue with city and residents, and begin the transformative journey to integrate resident voices into city government and strengthen the city's relationships with its community groups. And then as well as determine what our ongoing funding needs are. So the planning aspect, we're going, as we go through this process, we'll go through a meticulous process to evaluate what our engagement efforts currently look like, what the, you know, what are the opportunities, what is missing, how we can strengthen what we're currently doing and build on that, and what we're, what are, what's not working and what needs to change. And then develop a work plan that will outline what, what points we need to hit to be able to implement a, this community engagement infrastructure, as well as having that institutional commitment that is codified and, or as I should say, you know, institutionalized, whether it be through a formal vision statement, but something that really directs what this long-term engagement process is going to look like and to make sure that everyone has the same vision that we can work towards. I brought this chart up last time, and I just wanted to touch on it again, because I think it's important. There is a spectrum that work, for community engagement that we're trying to work towards. A lot of what we do currently is inform, which is providing the public with balanced and truthful information and keeping them informed of what's going on in the city. We're trying to get to the, more of the consulting and even involve collaboration and empowerment, which means we are working together with residents, empowering them to make decisions, or collaborating with them to help inform how the city provides services and goes about, you know, with its different functions. So just again, to elaborate a little bit further on the schedule, and I include this in the memo that we sent to council before the meeting. But there are four, or sorry, five different phases. We're through the first and approaching, we're almost through the first and approaching the second, which is foundational, or sorry, data collection inquiry, where we're going to start to actually obtain feedback and see what is, you know, what is working, what's needed. It's more of a needs assessment for community engagement in the city. And then we'll get into the strategy and implementation planning based on the determined needs. And then actual implementation. So we're hoping in April that we might have something to come to council with that we can say, hey, this is the, this is the strategy, this is the roadmap that we can follow and implement. And, you know, and then say, are you, you know, are you on board? Can we move forward with this? And then, of course, the next steps, and this is ongoing, is the reflection and reiteration, because it is an ongoing process, as we know, that we will continue to look to work on as we really focus on sustainable and effective community engagement. And I touched on this as well, and there were a lot of questions about the core, oh, I'm sorry.
Sure. It's okay. We could potentially come back to the mayor and council earlier. We could come back in either, probably in January sometime to see where we are with the data collection inquiry, just to provide sort of a check-in with council, if that is something that would be of interest to you all.
And there will be additional opportunities for feedback that I've been assured throughout, so, throughout the NLC process, I should say. And then to touch on the core composition, I also included this in a, in some responses to questions that were proposed during and after the count, the last two weeks ago, the meeting. And just touched on what are the specific roles and, you know, what the different individuals in the core composition, what they're representing. So myself as team lead, and then there is the other two staff individuals who are on the team. And I just want to reemphasize that NLC really wanted us to focus on including staff for this core team. But also, we took the, the initiative really to reach out and get some different community representatives that we worked with closely and consulted staff, including Calista Perez of the Tacoma Land League Crossroads Development Authority, who serves, who we really wanted to engage with based on their community, community, connect, community ties to the businesses and as well as our, more of the reaching out to the multicultural aspects of our community. And then, and then with Tommy's Pantry, who would serve as our nonprofit lens and representative from the Providers Council, who we think has a really good model of community engagement here in the city already. And then with city staff, Mariama, who works with our tenant associations and is the community outreach person for the housing department. And then Christine, who is our liaison with the city manager's office and has been very vital in working on the community engagement vision statement. So the city.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt you again. I wanted to go back here. I think some of you had raised the question about Tommy's Pantry having two representatives. I want to clarify that the reason we're seeing two people here, it's not that they necessarily have two seats. It's just that, given their staffing capacity, they've asked that they, that we list another person just in case one person couldn't make it, then that person would be able to fill in. So they don't have bigger or more seats. It's just to address their staffing issues.
Or potential staffing issues. Yeah. So the Cities of Opportunity Program, which is what the Community Engagement Academy falls under. Now, the Community Engagement Academy is a new program by NLC, but it falls under a umbrella of the Cities of Opportunity Program, which has been ongoing. And you can see some successful examples, and I won't dive too deep for the sake of time. But you can see Charlotte, North Carolina, increased participation in comprehensive plan, engaging community and city leadership, and focus on equitable outcomes. And then you can see a couple of different examples, but all, some of the other focuses on our health, community health and wellbeing. But NLC has provided some success examples of what this can look like. So next steps, so the council works, obviously today, we're on the council work session. And then we will propose a new draft resolution. But the, we're trying to address the council's commitment to Community Connectors as a priority, just reaffirming that. Trying to get a consensus on the vision of the Community Connectors Program and how we assist residents in identifying and accessing resources and social services, directing staff to continue to work towards developing a Community Connectors Plan model with the assistance of the NLC Community Engagement Academy. And then if necessary, carrying over the $150,000 that is currently allocated in general funds from FY 26 to FY 27, again, if needed. And then in, we said the March, April could be another update to council, but again, potentially as Mara said before then. So that was a lot. Now open for any questions, any further points for discussion.
Great. Thank you so much, Ryan and, and Deputy City Manager Huptee. And I appreciate you all taking the time to revamp the presentation a little bit, to provide a little bit more clarity. What I'm hoping we will be able to do is to have a bit of a discussion around the overall aim of the Community Connectors, recognizing that there's, dare I say, some of us old timers that were here when the concept was developed. And then newer council members that have, have thoughts and ideas around ways in which or challenges with that two-way communication. So I want us to kind of start a little bit, just in terms of thinking globally, conceptually about what it is we're trying to do. And then we can get into a little bit, any thoughts that people may have regarding how we're doing it in terms of, you know, what was displayed, for example, with the connectors model, in terms of the, the NLC project and the like. So that is a little bit of a framework for the discussion. Ryan, will you do me a huge favor and go to slide seven? Perfect. And so I think I would like to use this slide as the foundation for discussion, because I think it serves as a really good reminder of what the original concept was, which was connecting individuals and households to available social services, employing a lead navigator, part-time navigators for the purpose of assisting residents in identifying and accessing, it's an and, accessing social services versus the concept today, which is around forming the network, building the internal and external capacity to reach more residents and share information, and connecting residents to resources and social services. And then there's that, that middle piece, assist residents in identifying and accessing resources and social services that connect the two. So with that, I kind of want to open the conversation up in terms of, conceptually, what are you all thinking in terms of the overall vision and goal of the Community, Community Connectors Program as you see it? Councilmember Dibala?
Thank you. So to, to start us off, I, whether it's through the community groups or through individual residents, I gather, is something that will be developed during the NLC Academy, when you look at the models and figure out at a more granular level what makes sense. But I'm still, I'm still stuck on the two-way street that I see in a lot of the associated words, but I don't see here, the idea that. The idea that we would develop a way to have communication between the city and residents and integrate their voice, begin the journey to integrate their voices into city government. I'm reading from the two slides later on the academy objectives. And there's other places in here.
And from the more engaged civic life that came from the, that came.
Well, you can, you can say that, you're right. And I can't quite find that right now. But I would, yeah, I would appreciate your amplifying. That's, that is in the middle part here and on the right of this, these circles. Is it, so if it were me saying what I think the purpose is, it would be assist residents identifying and accessing resources and social services and take steps towards integrating resident voices into city government. So I'm missing the "and," and maybe I'm the only one, but that's an important piece to me. Thank you.
I can touch on that briefly, and I think, and I don't have the resolution in front of me right now, but I think that might be touched on in the resolution.
Actually, I thought it wasn't.
Okay, I'll have to take a look at the resolution, but it's something, because I think it's an important point. I agree.
Okay.
Sorry. So Councilmember Dibala, I just want to make sure that I'm clear, because I really want us to stay here, because I feel like we are saying similar things that are different. And so I think it is really important, and that's why I want us to pull out this slide, because what you've just said, Councilmember Dibala, is about the actual. But this is to assist residents in identifying and assessing resources and social services. But what you said was there was a missing piece and bringing or having them involved, or having that information involved or wrapped into how we ultimately govern, right? Like, so there's a feedback loop that you're saying is missing. Am I misrepresenting what you just said?
No, it's possible that it wasn't in the original concept.
It wasn't in the original.
So maybe it needs to be over on this side. But that, if I were to define what we wanted to do today, yes, I think there's a feedback loop, there's a piece missing. And the feedback doesn't just come, you have to work at getting it, not just informing people and helping them access social services, but helping them to engage in civic government, civic life.
Okay. And so that is actually a, I would argue that that is actually an additional goal that is distinctly different from what the original concept included, and is a little different than what is communicated here. And so that's why I think it's really important that we're having this conversation, right? Because I don't want us taking frustration out on staff when we said we had one thing in mind, and we're all thinking conceptually something slightly different, okay?
Yeah, and may I say that the reason that I feel that way is because we are no longer in COVID, and we are no longer in 2023, actually, it was before that, when the concept was first developed, where there was a very, very clear need to get information out. Boom, right now, yesterday. And we, things have evolved since the city capabilities have evolved, the situation has evolved, the needs that we have from residents have evolved. It's the community groups that didn't even exist, that you're talking about working with now, have evolved. So that's why I feel it's important to amplify and include a second half to the goal.
Right. And I, one of the things that I would, I would actually, and this is not to push back in any way, but trying to leverage some of the lessons learned from the community engage. One, I would say, that, one, I would say that we are actually increasing the need to have to connect people to social services. We have more people that are unemployed. I'm getting called regularly about people in need of stuff, and trying to figure out how to navigate getting them the stuff. So I actually think that we're on the cusp of having more people that are in need of having someone to help them with identifying and accessing resources and social services. So I think that that is something that is still very important. I also think that one of the key takeaways, at least for me, through the REC Center engagement work, was when you are dealing with hard-to-reach populations, you can't just come to that community asking for stuff. I hear all the time, the elected officials only come to this building when you want my vote. But you don't come here when I need hot water, or I can't pay my light bill. So what was, what was a key takeaway for me with the REC Center engagement was you kind of got to start with connecting people to, or connecting people to what they need first. Then they build the trust with the government. Then they are more likely to engage in a meaningful way and feel comfortable with engaging in a meaningful way, because we're also dealing with these cultural differences that exist as well. Where you have large segments of our community that are not, they're immigrants, and they're not taught that the government, they don't necessarily see in their lives that the government is good. So I think that what you're talking about in terms of a, like, what this program should strive for in the short term versus the long term, I would see assisting the residents in building this network to assist residents in identifying and accessing resources and social services as that immediate, short-term objective. And then the goal, or the long-term impact, is you start to have more individuals who are hard-to-reached that are ultimately engaged in our city government. You will start to see things like they're seeking out, they're seeking us out. They may be participating in work groups, they may come to council meetings. They feel more engaged because we've met, or at least tried to meet, some of those initial needs. So I'm just trying to make sure that we're not trying to establish a, something that it's going to be ultimately long-term, and conflating it with something that we're going to be able to immediately see in the short term.
I do think it's, yes, all of that, I agree. And I think it's important to say now that that's where we're going, one of the places we're going. And I think it's important to say upfront that we are working towards or inviting people to, whatever the words, there were a couple places where it said things like that. Where it's not agreed, but I think it's important to state it upfront.
Okay, thank you.
If everyone agrees, I can work on words.
Okay, give me, give me one second. I, again, can't see whose lights are on.
So I have.
One here, okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember Landman, you're next.
Thank you very much. I think this has greatly improved over what we saw the first time. And I think it, unlike the draft of the resolution, this presentation definitely shows that you've taken on board a lot of what you heard. And I think that the point that Councilmember Dibala was making, part of the way that it is reflected is in how, when we discussed the Public Safety Task Force findings, we actually did talk about integrating the recommendations for having dialogue and engagement in civic life being included in this program. There was actually a conversation, as I recall, that the Community Connector Program was a place where we could do that. And so I'm very glad that you included that mention in here. And a big part of that engagement in civic life is first being identified and then being heard. And that, that five-step program that the NLC lays out in their spectrum of public participation. I think, Madam Mayor, in a way, that's what you are talking about, where it doesn't start out at the empower stage, it starts out at the inform stage, and people on a step-wide basis get familiar, get comfortable, and eventually they are empowered to act. And so I do agree that when we set out the goal here, it should say, assist residents in identifying and accessing resources and social services with the long-term goal of becoming collaborators and participants in engaged civic life, or something along those lines, because that is our goal. We don't want to have people just being waited to, waiting to be serviced. We want them to be actively engaged in defining their city priorities and the way, you know, the way that some of our residents already are. And we want everybody to feel empowered that way. And if I could just talk about one other way in which I think we could do that better. I understand your point that you were making about how the NLC recommends that the core team be comprised primarily of city staff. That makes a lot of sense to me for a lot of reasons. And you've gone outside city staff for a couple of sources, business and nonprofits, who are key components of this. But there are some elements of city staff that seem to me like they would be very valuable in doing your landscape analysis that the current membership may not include. And one is the recreation department. They reach a whole component of interested parties that this group might not. And the others, both seniors and youth, two really needy groups that we service with really important programs. And the others is the library, who also, they see people that you don't necessarily. So I'm hoping that they might be represented in this core group.
I'm sorry, can I just touch on that again? And again, there's, I think there's a different, there's different roles between the core group and how we are addressing the rest of the community. And we are receiving additional community feedback that's helping informing what you're talking about right there. So we are reaching out and communicating with those different staff. And I've talked with the, I've talked with HCD, I've talked with REC, I've talked with the library to try and get some additional feedback. So that's part of our process. But the core team very, has a very specific role in working through this NLC process, which is much more specific. And, but there is a broader, there's a broader component to it that we are addressing, that these individuals that you're, that you're talking about.
So they're going to help you identify the various interest groups that you might not otherwise know about. I mean, you know, I was thinking about the gentleman who was here a couple of weeks ago and talked about how essential the REC Department was and the people were who essentially brought him into civic life. And we've heard that over and over again from people, yeah.
Yeah, so currently, and we're not on that phase right now, and I'm not 100% sure where that's going to come into the process, but we're currently working with them to identify what community engagement practices we're currently doing, and what's working in the city. So there is, and not working, important distinction there. But that is an important component of what we're doing. So that's happening. But these core teams' work is very specific and requires more intentional kind of devoted time than what we would, you know, expect from a broader, that broader feedback that you're asking for.
I think we just want to emphasize that the core team, again, it's, they have specific tasks. We will shop the, what we come up with, the recommendations with other departments. HCD is an important partner, for example, because they already have the existing relationships with these other organizations that serve as Community Connector role. So parks, I agree with you, parks is a very important, a lot of times it's the entry point to civic life. So our Parks Department is a very important partner. So I guess I'd like to ask, the core list shouldn't be looked as all-inclusive. This isn't going to be baked just within this group. This is just a, almost like a, just a group, not to minimize their role, but they're, what we develop with NLC will be shopped and circulated to others to get input from these other core, important departments and community members.
One way to look at it might be, we don't have the staff capacity for one person to do this work all itself, but with all these, with these core, the core team is going to help take the load off of, you know, if it was just me, per se. So it's like that, and they're going to help facilitate this broader process, if that makes more sense.
Okay. And so again, I just want to make sure that we're staying here, all right? I'm going to, I'm going to keep pushing. And I know folks want to get to other parts of the slides, but I need us to stay on slide seven. Because it's, and forgive me, because, you know, I do program evaluations, and I think in terms of logic models. So we are, so what I've just heard is that the primary goal, as was described, is to assist residents in identifying and assessing resources and social services with a long-term goal of increasing civic engagement for hard-to-reach populations. So when we are looking at this concept today, right? Form a network of existing community organizations that residents trust. Build internal and external capacity to reach more residents, share information, connect residents with resources and social services. Are folks thinking that those are, what are you thinking in terms of what those components are? Do we like those? Would you consider them as part of the how? We would assist residents with identifying and assessing resources and social services? I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, as this list here of how the staff is kind of thinking through, conceptually, the vision for this project, that we're not losing anything with these additional components, or if there's some aspects of these additional components that don't work for folks. I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. And then, Councilmember Hanzak, I see your, I see your hand.
Thank you, thank you so much. I do think this presentation is extremely helpful from where we were, where we started. And it's helping me realize that there is, I think, some, perhaps, some misalignment between what I presumed was our, was more of the goal of the Community Connectors Program. And I take us, I mean, I'm not sure which document to go to, but on slide, sorry, ooh, this is so small. Slide five, going back two slides, which is still scope, I think. These initial concepts, improving community engagement with harder-to-reach groups, creating two-way dialogue, and obtaining community input. I mean, it gets to Councilmember Dibala's point. I had presumed that this was not just a long-term goal, as the mayor has rightfully outlined. I think that is, in fact, the way we often do that in our very diverse community, if we're effective. But I also think it's a short-term goal. And I'm struggling now, seeing this new sort of way of framing these things, exactly how that goes into the scope. But again, now if we go back to slide seven, where we're trying to land here, I think it may be partially my interpretation of this, on the far right of this slide, under concept today, where it says, build internal and external capacity to reach more residents and share information. To me, that's not, because I'm not totally in concurrence with the middle part, that we were restricted just to accessing resources and social services, but we were also committed to this two-way engagement. To me, that far-right thing about reaching more residents and building a capacity was getting at that two-way communication part, but not quite getting, you know, the language for me was inadequate. And I saw it not just as a long-term goal, but as a short-term goal. And then I would get into the how if I began to elaborate. But that's, that's my concern, I think, and I do think this gets to scope. Like, is this part of the scope as we see it? I think it is. And if I, if I can, this is still on scope, if I could take us to slide, your slide. Oh my gosh, these numbers are so small, I'm sorry, slide 12. I love this, I love this model, but when I look at this model, what I, I see, what the first thing that came into my head was, well, what I want to see along the bottom is inclusion. That's missing from this, because you could do all those things along that red arrow, but if it's not an explicit goal of all of the work that's happening to expand to these harder-to-reach groups, not just in a two-way, but even just keeping us on, you know, the first column of this table, that we're actually making sure we've reached them in the first place to inform. I think that's where I feel like I've spent a lot of my bandwidth as a council member, and that's very difficult. And I know that Councilmember Gilbert and I have sort of landed there, and that's where a lot of our idea generation has come from and our frustration. So like, if this slide, if, and I have to think harder about like, you know, what does that mean therefore? But I don't know if what I'm sharing with council is making sense about my frustrations about scope, but I just. about scope, but I just, it's not, it's not quite getting me there for what I thought was the scope. And it's not just two-way. I mean, even one-way. I feel like we're missing the one-way that's not just related to resources and social services, although that is absolutely essential. It's the basic, because once you do that, then you begin to bring in a lot of people that you wouldn't bring otherwise. But it's also just getting information that is of value, of high priority to the council, of high priority to the city, of high priority to the residents that you're touching.
So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna kind of pull that thread a little bit to make sure that I am, am clear. So when we are talking about information, and I think one of the things that might be maybe a little, a little confusing was, is because the original scope, or at least how it was flushed out, was really related to social services, right? So health services, health education, food distribution, utilities, mental health, you know, those kinds of things. And so when, when you are saying information, are you just referring to general council information, or all information, or information that is specific and unique to the populations that we're trying to reach?
Yes, the, the, the final part in particular. So it is, it is identifying the priorities of the council that we lay out every year, right? So, and then determining what are the specific needs of target groups across the landscape, and making sure you are delivering those resources that that population needs to those constituency groups. So if the issue is, and it may be often all groups, but one of the things, one of the biggest gaps that, in the hard-to-reach population, that, that council member Gilbert and I identified, and I know it's very specific, but is in multifamily and rental buildings, that there's some, among, there's a whole array of different kinds of folks, but a lot of those folks are really, really hard to reach via our traditional pathways that we have been using up, up to now. And so, and, and we're just talking here about inform, inform. And so that is where I get stuck, because I feel like that's not just social services and resources for, and I don't know if you want to speak up here about, yeah.
Yeah, certainly. And again, thank you for clarifying. I was a little more confused last week, so, the last time we spoke about this, but yeah, absolutely, there's been a struggle with getting folks in our apartment buildings to know about and understand some really important issues that are going to be coming up here soon. For example, Maple Avenue Connectivity Project, and we're going to be having discussion about affordable housing and rent stabilization that, and we've had some workshops and forums that people haven't showed up. And, and, and I was curious as to how much we, how much outreach we've been doing, because we have certain apartment buildings that will post a flyer about certain things. Now, how do they get that information? My building, to be specific, the Duville. And then there's other buildings and, that don't have a resident manager, that have no clue about certain things. And so there's a sense of urgency, so, and, and that's why we wanted us to focus a little bit on that sharing of information piece.
I think that's a really important part of what the new vision entails, because at least from my experience in communications, what I've seen, some of the best ways to communicate with individuals who are hard-to-reach is through those grassroots means. Grassroots means, meeting people where they are, actually, actually being at, you know, farmers markets, at, last weekend, I was at the Tommy's Pantry Providers, sorry, the Tommy's Pantry Resource Fair, and actually having individual dialogue with residents who I've never seen before, I've never talked to before. But that is where I think there's a lot of, the people are showing up to those, to those events because they trust those organizations. And I think we can take a lot of lessons and we can really, that's that empowerment of those, those organizations. If we can continue to connect with those organizations that have that trust, I think we can help address a lot of that issue, which is very real, and which we're, you know, as staff, we continue to, to, to talk about every day. And how do we, even in that first column, that inform column, and as a communications director, I think about every day, how do I get the message of the city to those individuals who I know are not, are not seeing this information? That's something that we need to address, and we realize that. And we're taking, we're taking the steps that are within our ability currently, but I think as we work through this more thought-out process through NLC, it'll really help us determine the best means of continuing that, and then bringing those individuals who we need to reach, those hard-to-reach individuals, bringing them back into the fold, talk, getting back to now, council, council member Dibala's point, can, having them continue their engagement with the city. So that's the continued, that's the continued sustainable part. So it's that initial, as you talked about, that initial engagement, and then build trust, which they, which a lot of these, these individuals have trust in different community organizations, but how do we leverage that trust that they already have as a city? Meet them where they are, and then work to bring them into the fold, build that trust, know that they can come to the city when needed.
But can I go back, I'm sorry, to, I think we're still not clear on what the scope is. You guys are, we're talking about paths, delivery models, how we're going to get those services. We're also mixing the types of projects, the types of information we communicate. What would be really helpful to staff would be, Ryan, can you go back to page five, please? So the bottom here, where it says the city will develop, can we get your concurrence on where council sees the scope of the Community Connectors? I think once we get there, once we have a consensus, then we can talk the different projects that we want to, like the Maple Avenue piece, maybe that is a project that we want to communicate. But I think it'll be really important for, for staff, if, if council can come to a consensus on this.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager, helped you, because I was about to say the same thing. Because in my mind, if, if the idea is just about community engagement, and how to distribute information about government programs, and how to obtain, coming up with novel approaches to obtain input about, like, our stuff, the city stuff, right? We don't do a lot of this, so it would basically mean, you don't need all of these, this whole network of nonprofits, right? Because we're only focused on city information, and trying to figure out how to best share our information with various community groups across the city, right? That, that changes the scope. If, if the scope of the program really is to try to come up with this approach to connect people to social services, and building this network of entities across the city that could help us with that, and then the, one of the goals is to figure out the right mechanisms of getting that information to people who need it. And then the byproduct is it helps us to better understand how we may be able to communicate city-related stuff. That's great, but it, it sounds to me like, it, there's some that think the focus should be on community engagement of hard-to-reach populations, and how to distribute information about government work. And if, if that's the goal, and to create that two-way dialogue, and if that's the goal, we just need to, I mean, I need some clarity that that's the goal, because that, that change, the way I see what's being described, that changes things. Council member Hansak?
If I could just follow up then on that same trajectory of thought, because it's a very important point, and it may be, you know, like, like a total sort of misunderstanding of where I thought that we were going and where we were. But I really did think, and I, I guess I, for the moment, it is my strong feeling that it is very important, that it's not just about city services, but that we aren't doing the city part well enough yet. And so that is the minimum, and then building on that would be, you know, out, out to the so, social services provided by all of these other things. Looking at your target audiences as holistic entities who don't ever think in terms of, is that a city-owned park or a county-owned park? Is that, do I get my healthcare, or not my healthcare, but do I get my scholarship from the county or the city? Do, that I, I need money, you know? So looking, you know, that, that your, your end goal is your user who's not thinking in those silos, that's much too siloed, but knowing, knowing that our city information, even our city information is not reaching those individuals, and that they're, and they're not going to go looking for the information on our city website, because that's not the first thing people think of. They think, I need service. I need, I need information about this, this road. I have no idea who owns it. I don't, I, I have an opinion about it. You know, so thinking about that, I think that this scope would, would say, I, I don't know, I have, I would have to play with the language, but to me, it's just absolutely not totally just about social services and resources. But if, if the rest of the council doesn't agree with that scope, I mean, I just, to me, it's, it's broader than that, a lot broader than that. And I, I, I would even, honestly, I'm okay with stopping before we get to two-way engagement. I would love for that to be the end goal, but I actually don't know that, that, I think that's very aspirational at this point in time, given where we're at.
So, I mean, I, and I see council member Schlegel, I see your light. So again, I hate to keep pulling, and I'm sorry, I develop programs, and I evaluate whether or not they've done a good thing, or they've achieved what they're, what they were set out to achieve. And what I'm, what I'm saying is that for the purpose of staff's needs for clarity, would, would council members, let me just get a quick show of hands, like, identifying and accessing resources and social, assisting residents in identifying and accessing resources and social services? Is that something that people think we should still have as part of this effort?
As part.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, all right. So I'm, I'm saying this because, okay? That is broader than just city services, right? So that means, I don't want to hear, hey, why are we not explaining all of the things that's going on with, what the council is doing? Like, they're going to have to pick and choose certain topics and certain areas of focus that would enable them with using the nonprofit groups that they're partnering with, using the business associations that work, their partner, they're going to have to narrow things down a little bit to actually make this thing doable, right? All right, so we got that part clear, so that helps. It, it sounds like the goal of increasing civic engagement, right, for hard-to-reach populations, are folks okay with that being identified as downstream? Long-term? Meaning, how are we going to show that we have, within, this project is a, what, a year? Are we going to be able to show that residents, through this engagement, are going to be more engaged? Well, I guess you could. You could do a survey with folks that participate afterward, say, hey, are you more likely now to actually come to a council meeting? Like, is, is that what you all are hoping is a goal of this program?
For me, yes.
For you, yes.
There could be metrics such as joining city committees, or leading a tenant association, et cetera, or signing up their neighbors, et cetera.
But that's, that's downstream. That's not something that you're going to immediately see.
Well, you asked if in a year, would you be able to measure it? And those, you could.
You can measure it, but are you expecting to see some sort of impact? Probably not, right? So if the first goal is, hey, we want to make sure that we have our nonprofits and everybody together, we're asking them, how are you engaging residents? How are you reaching the people who need your services? What can we learn from you? We then say, okay, let's build this whole network of existing community organizations. Now we know where food is. Now we know who has housing supports. Now we know all of those things. Now, let's try to figure out how we can communicate these services, using what you all have learned. How can we communicate these services and access to these services to our multifamily buildings? What are some of the lessons learned? What are some of the challenges? Then we can come back and say, all right, now that we've shared all of this information, and we've learned from you, learned through some of this trial and error about the benefits of getting this information to you, are you still connected with these organizations? Are there some things that maybe, now that you know the city is here to provide the support, are you more likely to, to participate in the city in other ways down the line? So I, I think, I, I get count, I get staff's confusion, because even though you may feel like you're saying the same stuff, you're, you're actually not. You're actually describing this program slightly differently. And so if the goal is to make sure that we're able to have, one of the primary goals is bidirectional communication, right? That's one of the main goals, then that needs to be worked in upfront. So it's not just about getting you resources. You may have to develop some other approach to make sure that you're able to get information out to people, get information back, and see how well you did it. And, and if that's what we want, then we just need to say that so that they can work that in. And I don't know if I'm not making sense, but, but it is a, it is a fundamental difference.
It is a difference. It's the, 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 I, I, I don't, I feel like this, but going all the way to, what did you call it, increasing civic engagement, that may be a long-term goal, but if we aren't achieving increased, increased informing of people, which is so very fundamental, and I'm not just talking about social services and resources, but about what is happening in our city that matters to certain populations, such as the Maple Connectivity Project, I know, or to, you said.
Rent stabilization.
Yeah, rent stabilization, or other key issues that are very, very important to certain populations that are hard to reach, then we're not achieving, to me, the goal, one of the key goals of the Community Connectors project. And that, I mean, then, then you go to this long-term, two-way communication, but if you don't just do that part, that part, and I, I think, to me, we're over-restricted by talking about just accessing resources and social services. But again, maybe I'm, I'm alone in that feeling that, that the scope is too limited.
Yeah, and I would, I would just, I'm, I'm going to call on other folks. I would just push back. I'm, growing up the way that I did, I do not want to talk about policy when I need food.
Yeah, agreed.
I don't want to talk about policy if my mom doesn't have a job. I don't want it to, like, I don't, that's great. I have five jobs to get to, I'm never coming to a council meeting. So if we're not able to address some of these core needs, the idea that you're going to be able to pull people away from that fight in order to engage on these, on some of these things, not all, I think is, is a little, it's a little disconnected, especially when you're talking about hard-to-reach populations. I think you have to start with.
I agree. This is, this is the bread and butter of, and I'm sorry, I won't take any more ban, be in bandwidth, if you have things to say, but I couldn't agree more. This is what I do for a living outside of council. You first meet people's immediate needs, but it's not necessarily a long-term thing. It's just showing that you are a source of information that people actually need and value, not that you are waiting time until they build all of that trust. It's just, I am a good source. I am a source, like, like, you contact whatever this community connector source is, and you get the information that you actually need, such as a utility outage, and you go, I have no idea who to call. I don't know who to call. Who am I supposed to call? That's the kind of stuff that we get. I don't know who I should call about that project that's happening next to me, or about food, whatever the question is, you're needing the answer to your immediate question. Like you said, it's the immediate tangible things, and then that's the trust that you have. But, and then when the question comes that might feel like it's far away or distant, but it actually really is going to matter, like affordable housing, then you're ready to give that opinion, even if it's quick, you know, about something that matters to you. I just, I think that's where we're, we're missing the, we're missing something here. And I, I'm sorry, I can't do it on the fly, but I'll stop.
Can I make some quick recommended language before we go to council member Schlegel? Just really quickly. Assist residents in identifying and accessing information, resources, and social services. That's what, that's the language I like for that, that middle, middle portion. Assist residents in identifying and accessing information, resources, and social services. That information piece is, is, is very important. That information piece is, is, is very, um, important.
Um, I see the, uh, uh, Mr. Deputy City Manager Eubanks, I see your light.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to ask a couple clarifying questions. Is, is the intent of the resolution to address the NCL project or Community Connectors Program generally?
The, the goal is to address community, community connectors globally.
Okay, and with that being the case, um, does council envision the program existing beyond the term that we currently have funding for?
That is the million dollar question.
And if there's an ability to answer that question amongst council, there does seem to be the opportunity to establish short term and long term goals, which might alleviate some of the challenges that we're having in the conversation.
Thank you very much, Deputy City Manager. Uh, and that is something I know that I've spoken to some colleagues about the possibility of, depending on how this thing is set up. If it is set up as a one and done, we kind of get the information that we need, we institutionalize the lessons learned and we're able to, within the staff capacity that we have, continue to move this forward. Otherwise, it could be something that would need to be treated as an ongoing budgetary matter. And I don't, I don't know where folks are leaning in terms of, uh, whether or not, depending on how this is scoped, um, being willing to commit additional resources. The question at hand right now is what are we doing with the money that was already earmarked for this project? And being comfortable with moving it forward for a, um, uh, for the future, uh, moving it from this year's budget into the next. Um, but the, um, depending on how the scope is drafted, we may need to include future years' funding as well, or think through future years' funding. Councilmember Schlegel.
Yes, um, I, I think I have two, I have, I have, one thing to say about what maybe is a different way of thinking about this two way communication flow. And then I have something broader to say about, um, my concerns about the organization focused approach. First, on the two way dialogue, I think, Mayor, seriously, you're, you're imagining that the kind of two way information flow would have to do with maybe eventually residents joining committees or testifying at city council meetings or coming to, um, public information sessions. Um, those are all forms of two way communication. I've, I've seen two way communication that happens in real time, and I'll give you, I'll give you a hypothetical. Let's say that someone was, let's say an organization or the city was sponsoring a blood pressure clinic in, in an apartment complex. And the information went out, blood pressure clinic, uh, two to four P M, such and such a day. It, everybody got the information, people came to the clinic. Okay, that looks like success because the information went out and people came. Two way communication might be that from some of the people who came or some of the people who don't came, don't, didn't come. They said two to four was a really bad time, and could you do this at this totally different time? So that, as Councilmember Hansak and Councilmember Gilbert said, accurate needs identification begins to happen right then, because they say, okay, next time we do it, we're gonna try something different, thank you for the input.
So I do just want to correct the record, that was not my under, that's not how I was describing two way communication. What I was talking about was more around civic engagement and what would potentially be indicators for that. Um, but, but I don't want to interrupt you, but I just want to make sure that that, that is clear.
Okay, I'm sorry, I think I'm moving around in between two different kinds of terminologies.
We're throwing around a lot of stuff.
All right, so that, I've been sitting back and listening, and it seems like we're talking about scope. And one of the things that's difficult to separate the egg from, the yolk from the egg white here is that we want to focus on city residents, um, being able to access information, resources and social services. And also being able to help, um, iterate the designs of those things. Um, but we also want them to be able to know about and be informed about non city services. In only one of those cases do we want them to be giving us information back, really, and that's when it's a city kind of service or program. So, so what I'm getting at here is, now, now for my, my big picture thing is, when you look at the other cities that have been cited in the slides, Longmont, Boulder, Duluth, Grand Rapids, North Charleston, Aurora, Charlotte, which is also Charlotte Mecklenburg County, Rockville. Those are either the biggest players in their regions or they are geographically isolated. I'm not sure about New Haven, Indiana, it might be a suburb of Fort Wayne. We are like the opposite of that. There, if we are gonna, if, if we are coming into this already thinking, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna do this NLC thing and we're gonna develop a model where we have like the, that, that information tree going out to all those types of organizations that are shown on slide. Uh, if you could go to slide eight. When you think about the landscape around here, most of those organizations span a broader geographic area than the city. Faith based, business association, nonprofit, most grassroots community organization, not all. Ethic and cultural organizations, tenant associations, we would know, would be either in the city or outside of it. Why am I saying this? Because I, I thank you, Mayor Cersei, for the, your idea of the two step dance, you know, that, and, and, and Director Kelly, you also said, we, we build on trust so that if you can reach people with services, they, they begin to trust and then they begin to, to give information back to you. That's great, it's just that I'm saying that there are four elements of our reality here that, um, that make it different from a lot of those other places. First off, we do have a shifting landscape of new organizations coming along, new grassroots efforts coming along. We're seeing it so fast in the last six months. Some organizations may sunset, or maybe they don't, but they've kind of become deactivated. So, um, the next thing is that, as I said, we have organizations that are serving much more than Tacoma Park. And the leaders who we try to engage from those organizations may not even have as their top mission Tacoma Park residents. We have the two way desire, um, and we want to do that two stage dance. So I'm thinking that this may argue for a people focused approach rather than an organization focused approach. For example, Bradley Williams, who was in here last week, um, he's clearly been connecting people with opportunities for decades. Um, he's in the city, he's reaching city residents, he knows when he's reaching city residents and when he's not. Um, whereas if we worked with, uh, Impact Silver Spring, um, they might be, you know, they might say, yeah, we're part of your group, but maybe a whole bunch of their energy and focus is not on Tacoma Park. So I want, I wanted to know how much you can assure us that going into this, the idea of a community organization centered approach is just an idea and that it could still end up being a people navigator focused approach, just as was conceived in twenty two.
Hello, okay, as a reminder, this is just the vision. Um, there's a lot of work to, to be done to establish what the actual work plan and strategies to implement something are. Um, so I think getting back to Mayor Cersei's point, we need to establish what the vision is that we're working towards so that we can then actually determine what the delivery processes for doing these things are. So it could still take the shape that you're, that you're mentioning, but we need to assess the need and then develop the plan to best address the need. Which we have, we're not at yet, we're at a stage.
So, um, because I'm being mindful of time, um, one thing that I do just feel like it, um, I'm gonna pass things over to Deputy City Manager Hup T., but I, I do feel like right now we're getting all caught up in the sauce in terms of the how. And I, I want to allow for the staff to flush out the how. But it sounds like we still want to focus on, um, uh, and thank you, Councilmember Gilbert, identifying and accessing, uh, assessing information, resources and social services. We have to figure out some way to get re, information out to folks. We don't know what type of information that is just yet, we'll figure that out. Um, resources and social services, uh, Deputy City Manager Hup T.
Um, I was just gonna say, so it sounds like maybe it's two separate things, right? It's, it's, maybe it's looking at it by population. I think there is the immediate need, the social service, the, um, identifying and accessing information and resources and social services. And then there's this other component to, um, that is project specific. So if it's the budget or if it's Maple Street or if it's a, some kind of infrastructure program, that seems, they can marry, but maybe it's a, maybe it's a separate need, maybe it's more topical, depends on what, what that conversation, um, that needs to happen. So if it's around budget, for example, um, maybe they don't necessarily go together. Maybe going to, I don't know, Tommy's Pantry, who I assume deals with, uh, food resources. Maybe that same group isn't necessarily looking to, at least at that moment, looking to learn about the budget process. Um, so I wonder if maybe an approach to this is, give us direction on the scope that's, that deals with addressing the immediate needs, the food. And, and I think there's, even though we're post COVID, and I think somebody else said this, given the federal jobs environment, uh, the immigration enforcement's, um, issues. I think this social service component is still needed, and maybe there's even more now, um, just for different populations or different, different, different circumstances. So maybe what we do is focus on that for this, and then let's separate the other part by project. If it's, uh, the budget process or if it's a, some kind of survey or some kind of, um, a street expansion. Um, and we're trying to communicate that, that project. Or if it's rent stabilization, for example, we plan to work with the, um, um, tenant associations. They're gonna be very much involved in the, in the process. So maybe that, that topic gets circulated or gets disseminated through another group and not necessarily Tommy's Pantry as a, as a community connector.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think though, I do think that, um, we should figure out ways to pair. Um, so like, for example, Hampshire Towers, Small Things Matter. Does a huge food delivery Sundays, lots of folks in the building come through, lots of people in the building come through. If we as the city were connected through, and that's where I kind of, a, a little disagree in terms of there are organizations that serve beyond Tacoma Park, but because of the, the connection they have in the city, they have that trust. So everyone's gonna come down to deal with or get food from Small Things Matter. It would be great if there were like, uh, uh, budget surveys or a couple laptops set up where the budget survey could be translated, and while people are down getting their food, we're over to the side saying, hey, you should come over here and figure out and fill out this survey. I think though, what we need is to be able to leverage those organizations and their approaches to figure out who they're serving, how many folks are coming through, and what are some of the better ways that we could partner with them? Which is why I'm thinking would be one of the goals of taking the organizational approach that you all are describing.
It's resource sharing at that point, um, with those organizations and leveraging them so that they're on board with what, what we're doing. Um, and then we can use, we can, uh, expand their capacity to help us reach our own goals, the city.
Right, so it's, it's, it, it is one way, because again, you know, at least my experience has been, and, because I don't want there to be this mis, misunderstanding that information, like, the city isn't doing anything to share information with people in the multifamily buildings. I describe all the time the reality of how our newsletters are handled in our multifamily buildings. They are not put in individual mailboxes, they're stacked up in the side, on the side somewhere in a mailroom. Half the time, people don't see them. And so if, if you don't have someone in those buildings that can let you in enough to be able to, or if you don't have a flyer. So sometimes you have to develop, develop your own flyer. If you don't have a flyer, you have to develop one, and then you have to get someone to let you into the building, because you don't have access, so that you could put it up in the mailroom. Because even if you put it in the, in the newsletter, in a number of these buildings, they don't get the newsletters, right? Um, so I think that taking some of those lessons learned and working through these organizations can, I think, help with making sure that the information gets to people. But it, it, I just want to make sure that we're not trying to have a single project solve everything. Because it's, that means we're destining this project to fail. Uh, uh, City Manager Desperado, I see your hand.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and, uh, Council, uh, yeah, I've been listening very intently to all of this conversation. Uh, I thank you for your comments, I think it's been very insightful. Uh, I had, just going back to something, a, a number of things that were expressed as sentiments by a number of council members, uh, throughout this session, is I'm, I'm, I'm really sensing, among other things, a sense of urgency about providing aid to those in need with that need only set, we expect to grow in the future, not shrink. And what I wanted to say about that is, is that while there is a, uh, a, a path presented here in this work session towards ultimately, you know, having ultimately a, uh, a program of, uh, of, uh, of connectors, it does not, in my opinion, preclude the ability of the mayor and council to provide direct assistance, if it wishes, to those providers that are already fairly well networked. They're fairly well known among, among the vulnerable populations, and I'm talking about the food pantries and some of the other nonprofit partners that we have. Uh, many of these are folks that we presently have relationships with through the, as you know, through the Quality of Life Grants. And perhaps there's some others. But if part of what I'm hearing is a desire to be more available in terms of sharing some of our resources with, um, those organizations that are meeting basic needs, that's a, that's a conversation we can have as staff with council that's somewhat separate from this. We do have a immigrant services work session coming up that will be prominently discussed. So I just mentioned that as a, as a bit of a heads up on it. But I do want to just stress that I believe you, you have that, that option. Another thing is, there was a reference to, with the connectors program, and it was a fair question, is there an anticipation that this would be just, uh, you know, run the money out that's been allocated and that's it? Or a hope or expectation that it would run multiple years, at least as long as need exists, as determined by the mayor and council? Uh, I would say this conversation or the ones we'll have this fall will be a valuable precursor to the budget, uh, to the, to staff's formation of the budget for FY twenty seven, uh, and even beyond. Uh, I, speaking for myself, I have certainly been anticipating that we would be looking very hard at supporting our caregivers, our, our partners, the providers in the community. Um, a, uh, you know, and, and increased amount of support through the budget process. And that as far as this community connectors goes, I think the original concept was, as I was told, I wasn't here at the beginning, uh, three or four years ago, but my understanding was that the ARPA dollars that were originally allocated were to kind of jumpstart, uh, some, some positions that would ultimately, or some expenses uh, towards creating a community navigators program that would ultimately be assumed by the general fund. So I, and, and, and anyone's welcome to correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think the initial, as I was told, the initial assumption was that this would be an ongoing program as opposed to just strictly a short term one. So we, as a, you as a council. So we, as, you as a council, have that ability to direct staff, and, and certainly through the budget process, to, uh, give us some insights, uh, uh, into your thinking about, you know, are we building something for the long term, uh, or not? And, and that's just something to think about, that's not necessarily an answer for tonight, but just something I'd appreciate you thinking a little bit more about, both in terms of assisting direct providers, and in terms of supporting whatever infrastructure is ultimately determined to be necessary through this process to, or desirable, to create a community connectors program. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Despero, um, Councilmember Westler?
Thank you. Um, I ju- I'm trying to spell out, uh, trying to break down the pieces that I'm hearing. Um, one, I think one of the, the biggest is what I'm hearing is that there's kind of two, two asks of, of you, Ryan, and staff, and they intertwine, and if one is going better, it'll help the other and vice versa. But one is, so we are identifying that there's populations that are not getting our current information. You said, this is what I think about every day, right? So I think we're saying, we need to, we wanna help you, or how, what help would you need tomorrow to better get the information that we already have, that we put on the website, we put in the newsletter, right? Like, how are we making sure that it actually is getting to the people? Then, community connectors, what I had kind of thought of, and I, that's one of the end goals is if a resident says, hey, I just got evicted, and I know, oh, I call this person, and they know who to call to get the right support services. So to me, that's then a need of like a one-on-one, I need help, right? And we don't care where the help comes from, right? Um, and, and I think that if both of those things happen over time, um, because the networks of organizations, right, is, it seems like the groundwork for what you have for the community connectors is to get us to a place where it's easier to say, one-stop shop for folks in need of some kind. Um, and the more that we can ensure that we're better communicating to all of our residents, the better they will know about things, and the, you know, like they feed into one another. And then the other, though, third thing, is that we also, right now, have to continue what we are doing, or might do, to get aid to folks tomorrow. Like the immigrant, um, support services that we're gonna talk about, um, in a week or two. So I know it's hard to say that there's a lot of like top priorities, but I feel like those are like the short-term goals, and then they get to a place where it is a much more involved and engaged, um, residence, and they know how to access this stuff, and they are coming to the means because they found out about it, right? Like, it's all feeding, um, together. But I think that the communication to, for example, the multi-house, um, house, house units, uh, buildings, um, that is super important, and I think that that is clouding what I think the community connectors is a more clear vision of how people need help, how do we get them the help? Boom. Um, so, that's my thoughts.
Uh, Councilmember Dabala.
I don't know, maybe what I have to say is, is, is going back a few pages, but, um, I liked, uh, the addition that Councilmember Gilbert suggested. And building on what Amy just said, I think the "and" is still necessary. I think we still need to have in the statement of the program that it's assist residents, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and work towards the two-way street, or however it wants to be phrased. I just don't wanna lose that thought, because it's different from adding the word "information" and talking about getting the basic information out. I don't wanna lose that, that thought we had earlier.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dabala, Councilmember Lamben?
Did you say Lamben?
Lamben.
Yep. Um, don't worry about it. I think that what I'm taking away from the discussion is that, that there is a critical path for everything, and the critical path is figuring out how we reach the people that we have not been reaching. Because everything else depends on that, all of their civic engagement, all of their access to resources, all of their, and everything else, and that, um, and that is gonna take different forms depending on the particular need that they have, but it's all, the, the, it's the obstacle that stands in the way of everything else working, and that, um, it may, it may not actually differ all that much, uh, which social service it is, or which government program that will either help or harm them. I was thinking about your point about people are not interested in policy when they're hungry, but I was also thinking about Councilmember Gilbert's, one of the key policy point, maybe it is a policy point, maybe it's not, but the Maple Avenue Connectivity Project, that may be the thing that determines whether a person can park their truck near where they live or not. And that's, you know, is that policy, is it food? I mean, you know, that's the kind of thing that they need to be reached, so they can find out that something could really affect their daily life. And we have, that's the challenge that, um, I think that this program faces, uh, that I, I think, maybe I'm wrong, but I think Councilmember, um, Hansak is driving at, that we haven't, we haven't crossed that, that threshold yet in all of the multifamily buildings, where we haven't figured out how to get through the door. So, um, I was looking at the, at the chart on page eight, which shows the concepts, um, of these, these different community connectors. It's divided up by, um, typology of entity, but I'm not sure whether that, um, typology is the right one, or whether the typology ought to be by type of service, or something else, or whether the proper place for this project to begin is a typology of, of communication. Um, I don't know, but, uh, and maybe this obstacle is, uh, you know, because each one of these groups may have different communication mechanisms, and maybe our biggest challenge is figure, is starting with the question of how do you reach the people that you serve? And we ask that question of the faith-based community, we ask it of the food providers, and maybe some use Signal, and some use, um, Sunday Church, but I mean, I feel as though that is really, uh, where the conversation should begin, and that maybe the people around the table, um, that we start with would be the ones who, who start with that question. And it could be that the landlords, who are the last people that we even left off of this, might be the most critical ones. So, um, I don't know whether that calls for reformulating the way we present, but anyway, I just think that that is at the nexus of all of the different other questions, and ought to be, it ought to be central to how we begin the process.
Thank you, Councilmember Lamben, Councilmember Hansak?
Uh, um, no, I'm, I'm thinking, there are a lot of different threads here. I, I think, to be really clear, I hope, one of the things that I do support is the language that Councilmember Gilbert very simply, simply put very succinctly about adding information to that inside bubble. Um, I, I'm open to whether or not we add two-way communication to the right. But, but what I think, um, the mayor said that really spoke to me, and I wanna elaborate a little bit more on this, because I think putting our heads around this is important, and I, again, trying to figure out how it fits into the scope. But the, the city needs, to, in my opinion, the city needs to be the kind of glue that brings multifaceted delivery, holistic delivery, to the final customer, if you will. And I think the reason that's so important is because in doing so, you build that goodwill and the trust in local government delivering the things that you need, and then you get the trust, and then you get the engagement ultimately in the issues that matter. Now, that's a separate good from simply meeting needs, right, that are, whatever they may be. And so it gets at like co-branding issues that are really critical to everything that we do. It gets at, um, I think the original vision, as I saw it, where you'd have these individual navigators that would be a source of all of this information. And I, I think that's where I'm also struggling with slide, slide eight, but that's because it gets back to the scope, you know, like, I think that information is also part of this, and I think it's critically tied to the fact that people perceive that they are getting, directly or indirectly, that in, that many of the goods that they need, or it's been facilitated somehow by their local government and their affiliates. And I think that's a really, really critical thread here that should not be lost, like when the mayor was describing how somebody comes down, and there's a table, let's, which, if, if that were the delivery model. The reason that matters is because then that person is perceived as facilitating a wide array of goods that are valued by that person, and they're perceived as being linked to the city, and then a person knows that the city is delivering. And it, that, I think that's just really, really important here, because that's who we are. That's, that's what we're, I mean, it's not, we are also meeting that need, but, but we have to tie them together. And I hope that wasn't too muddled.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak, uh, Councilmember Schlegel.
Um, I, I've appreciated the, the last few minutes of comments. Um, I, I think Councilmember Lamben, you used the word "reach" several times. And, um, going back to the Venn diagram slide, um, I forget, slide five. Um, it, may, maybe it's coming together in my mind as, um, reach residents so they can access information, resources, and social services right when they need to. Um, and I would, I can add two other things to the list, opportunities, and you could add engagement. Um, if you take something like the Maple Avenue Connector, so that they can access engagement with that question right when they need to. Um, I think that, that gets maybe at the, the need for urgency, and, and it becomes a measurable thing more when you can say, did you get to people when they needed it? You know, so I'll read that out again. Reach residents so they can access information, opportunities, engagement, resources, and social services right when they need to. And I, I'm informed by that by talking about, uh, it might have been, uh, it, it's late, so I can't remember who said it, but the idea of people in crisis, I think it was Councilmember Westlake, when people are in crisis, that's, rather than focusing on, okay, what's the landscape of the organizations, and how are we gonna weave that landscape together? That's constantly changing, but I, I think I'm, through this conversation, I'm leaning more towards an individual-focused approach, or household-focused approach, where it's like, signal to me what you need, and, and then we're gonna work from there. Yeah, instead of saying, okay, we've got a bunch of organizations, which one is ready to swoop in in this situation? Let's focus on the user experience, the user experience with, with all of this, uh, work, yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Um, I see, uh, Deputy City Manager Eubanks, your light?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I also really appreciate the conversation. Um, and, uh, uh, to some degree, wanna echo what City Manager mentioned. Um, and encourage, I think, council, when you're thinking about the scope, to, to, to go ahead and make the change, um, where, where there's the addition of the, um, I guess, the, the word "information," and, and that is revealing to staff. And it, it does begin to answer, I think, for us, um, to some degree anyway, the "how," which I, I, I do think we tonight have focused a little bit too much on the "how." Um, but in terms of the "how," I think what that information, adding that word does for us is gives some insight into, um, the approach that we would have to take. I, I, I wanna remind all of us that the city doesn't provide very many social services. And so, um, and I, and I also wanna reiterate the fact that it is probably true that the population of people that we don't reach very often probably have social services needs. And, and so, um, and they are the population of people who we wanna give information to and receive information from. Um, it's also true that any individual engagement is not likely to provide all of those things all at once, because the person delivering the individual engagement is not an expert in all places. And so, um, if we are focusing on providing information and providing social services, we probably end up having to take some kind of dual approach, which means that there's definitely that inter- an individual interaction, but there's also that need to rely on a social network of providers. Um, and so they, they will definitely, again, coming back to the "how," they will definitely need to be a hybrid approach, but it is not impossible, I think, to try to address, to some degree, both of these concerns that you all are raising, with some limitations. Um, those limitations being, we're not, at least right now, talking about the development of a new department, right? And so we are talking about a very select number of people, um, most of which are probably not full-time. Um, and so when we talk about kind of the concept of a table, right? The, the people who would be staffing that table, should we engage someone who finally is ready to collaborate in that way? That's the same staff that we already have. So it's not like we have a team of individuals that can now go door-to-door and communicate. We're talking about one individual that is now engaging in case management, basically. And that is very, very difficult for a person to manage. And so even the breadth of engagement that I think we're hoping for, I think as we talk about it, we should frame and qualify within what we can actually accomplish within the structure. All that to say that I do think it's appropriate to, 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 to continue to talk about information, to continue to talk about social services, um, because it informs our approach. Um, but just keep those limitations in mind. Uh, and the last thing I'll say is that, uh, again, kinda coming back to a theme that I'm hearing about the, the need to address things immediately versus, which, which is kind of the social services and what people require right now, not necessarily the policy discussions. Um, there does definitely seem to be opportunity to talk about short-term and long-term, uh, objectives. And on that longer-term side, we're talking about collaboration, we're talking about engagement, we're talking about two-way communication. And on the short-term side, we're talking about the immediate provision of both so- social services and the immediate provision of information. And so to the extent that we can kind of, uh, bifurcate, and in your description of what you desire from staff, short-term, long-term goals, and then also include your overall aim of information, resources, and social services that would do us a lot of good, um, and allow us to start thinking about the "how," and provide some information back to council, either internally or in collaboration with NLC.
Okay. Thank you very much, Deputy City Manager Eubanks. Uh, Deputy City Manager Huberty?
Um, I just wanna, kinda the, the, building on what, uh, what David, what David just said. So this is also related to, as you may recall, in the Public Safety Task Force, there is a specific item that we will be addressing in our next presentation. And the language in that is the creation for a community assistance office that provides all these services that are encompassed in, in, um, Ryan, can you go back to page eight, or page five, I'm sorry? Um, this right here, the, the bottom language. So there is, um, in one, I think it's, I don't know, recommendation number two or something. There is a recommendation that says, create a community services office within HCD that provides this. And as David said earlier, we don't have the capacity, nor do we have the services to provide all of these. Um, so what we would be doing is, um, well, what we, what staff would recommend is, allow us to help build the capacity of these social service providers, so that we can send folks there. Um, because if we were to do it in-house, um, it's gonna require, and we've just looked at a comparison of other communities, it would require probably three, at minimum, at least three FTEs. Um, so I think this community connectors, we're looking for this community connectors to fulfill a couple of goals, this here, but also the recommendations that were, uh, two of the recommendations that were provided in that Public Safety, um, Task Force. Um, and it does not, we can add the information, um, here. Uh, we could revise this to capture what was said tonight. Um, and to the extent possible, we can do, uh, a dual approach, where if the opportunity exists, we can provide the information, we could share the information. But I think, again, it's a different population. If we're gonna stick to, um, assisting residents, identifying, accessing, uh, information, resources, and social services, I think that's a different path than, um, you know, the community navigator that would connect people to, um, information about joining, you know, a city commission, or, or what have you. So I, I, I do see it as a separate path. We can try to combine where there, where, where it's possible, but I think- But I think if the focus here, in which there is a need for it, again, given the current environment we're in, then I think what, I think we would like your consensus on, let's revise this language to incorporate what you all said, and then build uh, move towards working with these organizations to fulfill that role. Because we don't have it here.[1665.62]